Alrighty, it is 6:02 on Thursday, May 16th. This is the city council budget hearing. And on tonight's agenda, we are reviewing the mayor, the treasurer, the assessor, the auditor, tax collector, and the police department. So we're joined this evening by obviously the mayor and our auditor. And we have several city councilors on Zoom right now. Councillor Greenie is here, councillor Givner just got here, councillor Bacon, councillor Divine, councillor Anderson Burgos. I do apologize for the last minute change to fully remote. I appreciate everyone accommodating that. And we should be all set to have our full council meeting on Tuesday, but I will keep everyone posted. And councillors, I'm just gonna, we'll start and go through the departments that are listed this evening. And you can ask questions, please raise your hand, and I will call in the order that I see them. I'm keeping track and I've got my notes here to make sure that no one has forgotten. And for folks that are tuning in perhaps at home or maybe watching this later, this is the first of several hearings. We will also have a hearing on Tuesday, May 28th, Wednesday, May 29th. And then hopefully we will have our actual votes done on Tuesday, June 11th. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor. And I'm not sure if, are you planning to go through the recap sheet tonight? Is that, okay, awesome.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, councillor Greenie.
Just quickly, when we discuss this budget, could we please have whoever has a question to ask, give the department number, the page number and the department number. It will make us more quick to identify which one they're talking about. Thank you.
Yes, wonderful suggestion. If folks could, if there's a line item that you're looking at, if there's the department that you're looking at, just let everyone know which line item. And I will be sure to remind people what page each department's on. So thank you councillor Greenie, appreciate that. So the first is the mayor's office, and that is page two. This is department number 121 on the sheet, so. Through there, and I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening councillors, members of the public. Before diving right into this, it's just, if I can, Madam President, just wanted to set the table a little bit here and speak a little broadly. The 25 budget presented in front of you is based on what we understand to be our revenue and expense projections and a fairly balanced understanding of what we think our municipal needs are. And so tonight, we also, we have with us our auditor, and we also have TJ Plant. You remember in previous fiscal, previous budgets presented, we'd have Andrea, who was our financial consultant, that would kind of do a high level forecast together with the auditor to understand how this budget, you know, to understand revenues and how we got to where we are with this budget. If I can, if we can just pass it to our auditor and TJ to offer that high level review so that much generally speaking, members of the public in the council can at minimum understand how this budget came to be, right? That we didn't just kind of create this out of thin air, Madam President.
Absolutely. Thank you. Hi, TJ, thanks for being here.
How you doing? Just to introduce myself, my name is TJ Plant. I work for a company as Open Architects. Recently before going to Open Architects, about eight months ago, I was in Springfield for about 17 years doing various finance roles. So happy to be here helping Holyoke and help the mayor and the council with the budget information. And I will, I guess, start the presentation unless Tanya, you wanna start on your level, but I can start at the high level and talk about the mayor's budget proposal. Am I allowed to share my screen? No, is there a way I can be?
Yeah, Jeffrey can probably help with that.
Sorry, I probably shouldn't have asked that as I was getting.
That's okay, it's all good. You should be all set.
Thank you. So the information that, this is gonna be very high level. We're working on more detailed information, but the important thing to note about this budget, can you all see this?
Yes, could you make it a little bigger?
Sure, let me just figure out how, sorry. I'm just getting used to this whole new.
No, I totally find, go to view.
Oh, you guys are in the way, sorry.
You see home insert share, there you go.
Alright. Sorry.
Okay.
View.
Right there.
That's perfect, thank you.
Alright, no problem, sorry about that. So you will note that overall, the budget is balanced using the property tax levy, which I'll talk, I'll talk about a little bit. The state aid cherry sheets, I know Holyoke is like many gateway cities or all gateway cities that are primarily funded using state aid, the local receipts, and then the basic expenditures for each department at a high level. I know there's departmental in your workbooks and the information that the mayor has provided. But overall, the budget is balanced. You see the ones there because there's just, you know, some pennies in there, that's what's rounding. But all in all, the budget is balanced. And it relies on 66.2 million, and I'll get into that, and tax levy, 117.3 million in the state aid, and then local receipts close to 12 million. And the key part to note that this is a conservative budget, that the numbers are subject to change as it relates to more information coming in over the course of the coming weeks. The budget's based upon House Ways and Means, the House final budget. And we know the Senate budget came out with their number, which is slightly better for Holyoke in terms of unrestricted general government aid. But also, there's just more information as, you know, I know this, we're, the Holyoke's in the middle of a revaluation year, and so we can get into that piece. But generally, just the overview is, this is a balanced budget, and it's very conservative as it stands now. So the tax levy. So the tax levy starts out at $64 million, 64.7 million dollars. That's fiscal '24's actual levy. So the way Prop 2 and a half works is you add your 2 and a half percent on line eight, and then you estimate new growth on line nine, and you have a total of 67.1 million. During the tax recap process, as of now, the levy ceiling is 66.2 million, so it is required to reduce that by the $829,000. And you'll see the 66.2, and then you'll see down here, you're talking total levy approved by Division of Local Services of 66.2. And this is subject to change and to be adjusted based upon the ceiling. It should be growing as the assessor's office does the reevaluation and finds value. It's, I'll defer to the assessor, but every five years now, the assessors have to do a revaluation of the entire city. And that is kind of when new values are identified and there's an ability to look at, you know, a different levy ceiling that may be available. So the great thing about, I guess, the double edged sword of Massachusetts is right now, this is the best thinking, but it's a bifurcated process where the city council is asked to adopt a budget, an expenditure budget in June, set it for July 1st, and then they have the luxury of time over the course of the next six months or so till you set the tax rate in November, December, depending on when Holyoke sets their tax rate. That time allows the assessors to identify additional value that may be beneficial to the city. And the good news is if you raise the levy ceiling, you're not required to tax it as a part of the levy ceiling and the levy limit. So the goal, my understanding is the goal is to grow this, grow the ceiling, to have available capacity at some point if needed, but to kind of manage the growth of the levy limit. And I'm happy to talk about that in detail. But the key part of it now is, it's conservative at the FY '24 number. It's at the 62, 66.2 million. And that is gonna be the basis for the budget as it goes forward now, subject to some fluctuation. So that's kind of the local piece of it. And I'll let the city auditor talk about the local receipts aspect to talk about total local source revenue, which is the levy plus local receipts. It's important to note that 750,000 has been set aside for overlay abatement applications that may come in if residents and businesses feel that they've been overvalued. So that is a healthy reservation of balance to ensure that the taxpayers have an option to talk to the assessor's office about their values. State aid. So the important thing about state aid is, I, you know, primarily state aid is the, is the revenue that, you know, helps Holyoke run beyond the local source revenue that I spoke about earlier. And chapter 70 is the education aid. You'll see that that has gone up by 4.2 million dollars to 101.1 million. And that is gonna help fund Student Opportunity Act and help fund much of the schools' needs going forward. And that is directly tied to a formula related to net school spending and how the school department is funded by DESI and through chapter 70 and other parts of the formula that we can get into on another day if you want to. Tonight, if you really want to. The other big one, you have charter tuition and charter receiving tuition offsets. Those are just money coming into the city. But the other big one that everyone talks about is unrestricted general government aid. And you'll note that using the House Ways and Means number, the number is 12.26 million, and that is going up by $121,000, so that's always beneficial. But this is conservative based upon the fact that the Senate budget just came out. And the Senate budget is about 242,000 and change above this number. So the hope is that when the House and the Senate go to a conference committee, which they should be setting up relatively soon, to set the final number, that the Senate number will prevail and that there'll be additional revenue available to the city for further appropriation. And that will be coming, hopefully sometime in June. But they set it up soon, and then they will meet, six members of the House and Senate will meet, and they will determine what the conference committee report's gonna look like. In addition to the cherry sheets, you have the benefits and the other areas of the cherry sheet where it comes back to the city based upon funds that they've expended and proven to the state for veterans' benefits and the exemptions, state owned land, and then the public libraries offset that exists. In addition to the state aid, there's also assessments, and that comes from the Commonwealth as well, where they determine kind of how much that they will assess the city for areas that need to be addressed. And you'll see, the big one generally is charter school sending tuition and school choice sending tuition. That is the charter schools that you have in your city, and the sending tuition are your students going out to other districts for that stuff. So we can get into the assessments a little bit more detail. But overall, the takeaway is that it's a conservative approach to the budget. And there will be time in the coming weeks to refine the budget estimates and to make any adjustments necessary based on revenue and other things that are figured out or determined in the coming weeks. Tanya, I think, turn it over to you unless, I guess we'll say questions for the end, or?
No, that's, however you wanna do it. If you, would you mind, I'll do the local.
Yeah.
I'll do the local receipts if you wanna share that.
Yep.
That spreadsheet. So just to go over the local receipts a little bit, I know that the city council was super concerned about the fact that we weren't gonna have ARPA revenue replacement. So I do have to say during the last couple of years, we were really conservative about motor vehicle excise, meals, room. So what you're gonna see tonight in this presentation is that the motor vehicle, meals, and room excise, they, they have gone up. Well, the motor vehicles specifically in the meals. So that, those went up around 23%. We have been collecting for years these figures. For example, motor vehicle excise was at 3.5 for the past two years. Our other at, excise, room occupancy in cannabis, about 2 million. So we are still being conservative, but we're also making up for that ARPA revenue replacement that the state allowed us to use in our budget. The cannabis stayed the same at the 590. Penalties on interest and taxes went up a little bit, 8.7%. Our payment in lieu of taxes is at 1.5, which is normally what we collect every year. But I can say that the mayor has been working very hard on the pilot program. And we do have a new, we do have a new contract with the gas and electric, which that should be increasing about probably $200,000 a year. Other charges for services, 16%, those are basic services that the city charges for. Fees have gone up 24%. Fees include things like tax title redemption demands, warrants, motor vehicles, dog licenses, so things that we weren't really doing during COVID. We have seen pickup in the last couple of years. So we went from 465 to 580. The department revenue schools, that's like Medicaid reimbursements and homeless transportation state receipts, things that the school gets reimbursements for from the city. And that has gone up since COVID as well. So that you're seeing a big jump in that. We didn't in the past even forecast any revenue for the Medicaid reimbursement. So that's something that has gone up through the years as the city has been receiving more Medicaid reimbursements in particular. Other department revenue, we've received some insurance reimbursements in the treasurer's office due to the fact that our employees aren't as sick anymore, so our deductibles have gone down. Licenses and permits have gone down a little bit, but it's still remaining pretty constant. Fines and forfeits, forfeitures would be like district court parking tickets. I know that everybody heard the tax collector say that the parking employees were doing a really good job. So we've seen an increase in our parking revenue, ordinance violations. So that has been increasing. And also our investment income with the treasurer had an investment in some alternative investment vehicles. And so the city, through January, I can say, has already received $350,000. And that will remain constant monthly revenue that we will be posting every month. And as you can see at the bottom, where you have your ARPA revenue loss, we're no longer claiming any of that, and we have a total increase of 7.5%. So that is what's happening with our local revenues. And did you want me to cover the expenditures now too, TJ?
I defer to the mayor if he wants a quick overview from you on the expenditures, but I can certainly click on it.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Mayor, I know you had a list also.
Go ahead, Tanya.
Okay. So the, I'm on the expenditures right now, and I'm just looking at the, the increases by different governmental units. So for our general government, which would be the mayor, the auditor, the treasurer, tax collector, we've had an increase of 8.8%. And public safety, police, and fire, you'll see an increase of 4.7% in those areas. Our education, which obviously goes by state aid and net school spending and, and transportation expenses has increased by 5%. Public works, the DPW, all of the, all of the departments within the DPW has increased 13.1%. Human services, health department, Veterans Council on Aging, increased by 4.7. Culture and Recreation, 9.5%, which is obviously the library, museums, and, and other areas of culture and recreation, parks and rec. Our benefits went up 5.4%. And a lot of that is due to our health insurance and liability insurance for our property and vehicles. The city has, has invested in many new vehicles, DPW, fire, and police. So that's the increase there for the liability insurance. Our debt actually has gone down by $250,000. So that's something that is really beneficial since we will be taking on some additional debt in the upcoming years for different school projects, and also we are building the new school. And some of our other unclassified, I'm sorry, I said property insurance over there, but our property insurance is in there and our health insurance is up. This includes claims and transfers to other funds, which was reduced. And I think that's all I have for that, unless you wanted to go over the individual expenses. But the department heads will be going over their budgets and going over the different asks that they had and the cuts that the mayor made. So I'm not sure that we wanna go into that much detail.
Thank you so much, Tanya and TJ. So I do, Madam President, if members of the council had questions, the purpose here for this exercise was just to kind of give you a high level overview of where the revenues are coming from. And when, when Tanya and TJ say conservative, that just means, as you can see, there's all sorts of buckets of revenues and that are, that are above just our normal taxation. And, you know, best practice, usually you wanna project less than what you think you're gonna collect so that that way, as time passes and you get closer to the calendar year end before you set the tax rate, it offers a little flexibility to respond to any unforeseen circumstances. Cause as you know, the budget is fluid. It's always a moving target to try to land the plane here and, 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 you know, to have a balanced approach to meet the needs of the community. And so I thought this would offer you a good, high level sense of the big picture prior to diving in, meeting individually with departments. And as you saw, the largest expenses, you know, we got health insurance increases, transportation costs, COLA increases. We try to get, we challenge departments to keep their budgets as close as possible to a 2% as a, you know, part of many strategies to, to, to be sure that the end product here is a balanced, a balanced budget. But with that being said, before we go into the mayor's office budget, do we have any questions on, for Tanya and TJ?
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanna recognize that we've been joined by several other councillors. Councillor Jenny Rivera, councillor Israel Rivera, councillor Meg McGrath Smith is here, and councillor Jordane is here as well. And I saw, so I see councillor Bacon's hand, and then Kevin, did you have your hand up? Or were you just trying to get let in as a panelist? I just wanna make sure.
Both, please.
Okay, alright, so we'll go to councillor Bacon first, and then councillor Jordane.
Thank you, Madam President. So my question is a general one also, and it is related to the total tax levy. From what I'm seeing, we're going right up just about to the ceiling. And what taxpayers will be asking me is, how much more will their taxes be going up based on this budget compared to last year? So I just wanna make sure I'm understanding last year's total correctly. I wanna say it was somewhere around 62 million, and now it's looking like it's going up to a little over 66. And I just wanna make sure I'm understanding it correctly. Thank you.
Mayor, why don't we take that question?
Yeah, I was just looking for you. You still with us?
I'm still here.
Oh, there you are. Go ahead, TJ.
Yeah, so the FY '24, this is the budgeted amount that was adopted as almost 62 million dollars. Then you add in the 2 and a half percent increase, so it got up to 63 million. What was actually the levy that is in DOR's website, Department of Revenue's website, was a 64.7, which becomes the new baseline for the next fiscal year, which is the 64.7. Then you, so I guess, does that answer the question? So you started out with a budget of 62, and then when you actualize everything, by the time you set the tax rate, the actual levy was recognized at 64.7.
Thank you, yes. I am understanding the calculation for the tax ceiling. From the perspective of the budget and the actual payments by the taxpayers, I just wanted to clarify, we're going from the 62 to a little over 66 in this budget, which is quite a big jump compared to last year's tax levy increase that went on the taxpayers. Thank you.
So, I mean, I can speak to the numbers. I guess I'll defer to the assessor for actually, if there's any estimates of what it means in terms of a tax increase. Really, the assessment process and all the other, the way the tax process works and the tax rate and all that stuff that I know you're all familiar with, it just is a byproduct of just the values and the, or total taxable value and all that stuff that goes into the calculation. And then the, you know, the rate sheet that comes out to set the rate. I'm not familiar enough with Holyoke to answer a question about what this actually means in taxes. A 5.5% increase in the levy doesn't necessarily mean a 5.5 increase. And by the time you set the tax rate, let me rephrase that. By the time you set the tag rate, doesn't necessarily mean a 5.5% increase for the residents. And that is something I will defer the rest of that question to the board of assessors or the assessor.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the correct base numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that base, and correct me if I'm wrong TJ, cause every day we learn more and more on our revenue parameters. And just like the last two budget years, you know, there was what we anticipated from the time when the budget was presented and approved for July 1st. And then just before setting the tax rate, the numbers completely shifted with even more excess capacity than we thought we had with, you know, it's with a limited, with a, with a limited increase. So instead of like seeing a 5 or 6% taxing increase, you know, I think, you know, it's been well between, I don't know, I forget what the numbers were, between 1.7 and less than 3%. So the idea is like, what, how do we, how can we, knowing these uncontrollable expenses around the health insurance, the transportation, among other things, how do we limit increases as much as possible so that it's not, it's that creating, you know, this, this major impact? And that is, you know, defined differently by my many folks. But, you know, with all that being said, you know, I thought this part of the exercise is critical. Cause a lot of times, you know, we go over the budgets and we, it's, we never really understand or get an opportunity to understand, you know, how these things work. So it's important to understand where these revenue sources are coming from. What is it that's the real impact, that's causing the real impact to the budget? And, and that way, as you go forward, meeting with departments, it'll help you, you know, make an informed decision in how you wanna proceed with, with votes. you know, make an informed decision in how you wanna uh, proceed with, with votes. Um, that, I think counselor or Madam President.
Yeah, counselor, counselor Jordane.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, couple of things I wanted to say. Sixty-four point seven represents the levy limit for last year, not the la- actual levy. Sixty-three million was our actual levy for last year. Just so, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, uh, you are correct counselor, that the sixty-four point seven is the levy limit that it comes from the tax recap.
Right. So the concern for some of us would be that what we set the taxes on for last year was sixty-three million. And now what is presented in front of us would be to go to sixty-six point two or three million here. That's, that's a lot. That's that's over a three million dollar increase in the levy. Um, that would have dramatic effect um, to people's tax bills, we were to go with that. Is there a plan B? I mean, how, how can we sustainably go up on the levy over three million dollars a year? Um, without even acknowledging the fact now we're gonna be at our levy ceiling. That's troublesome. Can, do we have an, could someone address the, how do, how can you grow government at over three million dollars a year? In this city? Uh, how is that gonna work?
But, or TJ, so you're right, I'm, I'm, you know, again, I'm gonna point back to the health insurance and transportation that gobbled up the little bit of excess percent capacity. We all worked hard to build over the last few short years. Um, and I can't, I, the pivoting to self-insurance was a good move, even though health insurance is going up thirteen percent. If we would have stayed the course, it was actually much, much greater than that, so the timing couldn't even be more perfect um, for that. And then, you know, it's when we meet with the school department and go over um, uh, their budget with uh, as it relates to transportation and our share of our local uh, share to the formula and, and the impacts that, again, uh, more uncontrollable expenses and mandates. The other thing too is this mandate on retirement. I mean, we're, we're obviously have been the course for a couple of decades keeping up with our contributions to fully fund retirement, but we're putting eight million dollars a year on top of you know, what we would put in there if we, if we were fully funded just so that we can catch up with that. And you know, again, more mandates on, on, on our community to meet the need and so um, that means we only have enough flexibility to cut in those areas where there isn't mandates, but services that are expected. So you know, it's, it's a, you guys been around longer than me. I don't have to preach the choir, but you know, obviously it's, it's a, it's a shell game here when it comes to trying to balance this thing and meet the needs and our obligations. The conversation across the Commonwealth too, with other cities and towns. Sorry, go ahead.
No, actually, if I could just add, this is a delicate balance and this is probably the, the most challenging part is trying to determine what that balance looks like between maintaining core services and funding all the non-discretionary costs that the mayor spoke about. Uh, in terms of pension, debt service, health insurance, all the other non-discretionary. And school department, we consider non-discretionary because you're funded at net school spending. School transportation is an ever-growing expense, so I, I, I hear you counselor and I understand where you're coming from and what the question is and um, you know, and I think that's where the conversation and the hearing need to really pull that out is you know, are there areas that can be reduced and maintain, still maintain core services and there's just conversations about um, what core services um, the residents want and what the tax bills that they pay um, pay for. And that's really the, the tough part of, of, of this, this balancing act, if you will.
Well, yeah, I guess we're gonna have to have that conversation, because we can really only healthfully grow sustainably a million or two. And we're already, in my opinion, living on borrowed time because number one is this all presupposes that re- residential uh, values continue to escalate at the same pace that they're going. We've alre- that should, has already built in tremendous excess capacity in the levy limit. Now, despite all of that, despite home prices going really through the roof as it is in Massachusetts and here in Hoyoke, this budget would have us at the levy ceiling. So that means legally, we won't have any capacity unless for next year's growth. So thinking about it, what are you hearing? I mean, what are you building into your assumptions? Because if you're proposing a budget at ceiling, that means you have no growth projection for next year. Cause you're certainly not gonna be able to raise the levy again for three million dollars more. Um, besides the fact people can't afford that, but even if they could, you wouldn't have the legal capacity to do that. So I'm interested to hear what your assumptions are for the growth of the ceiling in, in the next two or three years. Because otherwise, we've now with this budget absorbed any excess budget capacity we have for future years. So what's your, what's your projection for ceiling in the next two years?
Hey, you want me to take that one?
Yeah, uh, be- and before you jump in TJ, because I know TJ shared with me. And TJ, I'm assuming you're gonna share a little bit about what the considering that we've, we've been learning things every day, excess capacity is, is growing, so the little bit in front of you currently is not even it's not, it's artificial at this point, it's much greater than that. But um, also on top of that, I know there's a lot more um, growth revenue out there that um, the assessors are gearing up and getting ready to uh, tackle, um, among, you know, you have that behavioral hospital that's not, we're not assuming yet one hundred percent of what we anticipated to collect and that's coming. But um, um, go ahead TJ, there's, there's um, your observation on the access capacity before we jump onto this meeting.
Yeah, so I mean, the big, the big thing is that um, you know, right now you're uh, dangerously close to your levy ceiling and that is uh, obvious. But we're also, as a city, Hoyoke's in a revale year that is gonna actually go out and identify additional value. And that is gonna grow your ceiling. And the values that are out there are probably pretty significant that I haven't been catching before, because now the city is on a five-year reval year, reevaluation year. And that's gonna grab a, a, a fair rate, um, substantial uh, value growth. And I don't have the full numbers, I've heard some numbers, but I don't want to put them out there publicly in case they're not certified by the state, but that is gonna grow your ceiling. And that is gonna give you capacity down the road uh, in uh, fiscal twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight and beyond. And that, just because you grow your ceiling, that just gives you the, the breathing room that you could have in order to fund uh, the budgets at a, at a meaningful level uh, that meets the needs of the city. And I think that's kind of the big part of this is, this is our, this is our best thinking right now uh, at the time. And a budget, as you uh, know counselor, is a snapshot in time. And it's our best thinking and it's gonna change, ebb and flow between now and by the time the vote is taken in June and by the time the tax rate is set in November, uh, things could change significantly.
Um, uh, the only thing I'll say, uh, you know, obviously we'll have to talk to Debbie and get a report and see what you're seeing relative to the ceiling. Of course, it gets into, you know, what can people afford and who's paying it? Um, it'll be really interesting to see what people are having store. And I'd like to look at this as more than just, you know, one snapshot, agreed. It is the current snapshot, but I'd like to be thinking, you know, where, where this is all going. Um, but I did want to just touch on one other area before I uh, relinquish the floor here, and that's on health insurance. Um, we had a meeting back in January um, where we had this discussion about um, going to self-funded. And it was my understanding that at that time, the projection was no increase was gonna be in health insurance, but that we were going to be given regular updates at city council and that there was supposed to be a plan to come back in February, mid-February with monthly check-ins with us to see how the transition to self-funded is going. Um, did we go to self-funded? And we haven't had any updates since at least January on this topic. And now we're seeing in front of us a one point one million dollar uh, health insurance increase, so can we get an update as to what's going on and the transition plan? The city councils received no reports in f- four months at least on health insurance. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. I do see, uh, counselor Grady, I do see your hand up, but I see uh, our city treasurer's hand up and I just do you, are you responding directly to uh, counselor Jordane's question?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that briefly if, if you'd like.
Uh, Madam President, both, and I have a question on the mayor's budget too.
Okay, no problem. Counselor, I will come to you next. Um, counselor, or sorry, uh, Rory, would you like to um, address that question and then we'll go to the next counselor's question?
Yep, absolutely. Um, so uh, counselor Jordane is correct. Um, you know, I, I think the meeting won't get into when the meeting happened, but was um, certainly uh, during the winter, late winter, uh, when we came in and the city council adopted um, the acts to allow for a trust to be formed. Uh, as was mentioned at that time, uh, we'd be back uh, to the council once that trust itself um, uh, was, was finalized. Now, the trust itself uh, hasn't been finalized, so we still will be back in front of the council uh, to have that conversation, to have a deeper dive. Um, the way that we're moving forward with um, health insurance this year is we don't have the full trust yet. Um, the numbers that are presented to you tonight, uh, it's a ten percent, about a ten percent increase um, over last year. Uh, it is a self-insured product. Um, and we are being extremely conservative um, with the way we're approaching this. Uh, as I mentioned at that time, uh, we are building a series of off-ramps, uh, if we decide uh, that this still doesn't seem like it's a good uh, move for us to make. Uh, the ten percent that you see in the budget tonight with this uh, I don't want to call it a hybrid approach, but um, it's, it, like I mentioned, it's not a full trust yet. Uh, we still have to finalize that agreement and we will be in front of the council to talk that through. Um, and we can spend more time talking about this, uh, you know, at a future meeting or, or, you know, again, during this budget hearing cycle. Um, what we were looking at, if we had gone to the same type of insurance product we have had previously, uh, was a twenty percent increase. Um, and so what you see in front of you tonight is a conservative number. Um, as was mentioned, it wasn't gonna be the savings to our budget. It wasn't gonna necessarily be a direct saving to the general fund budget. It was gonna help stabilize costs uh, moving forward. We still uh, plan, uh, we still expect that that be the case, um, that costs are gonna stabilize. If this works, the, we wouldn't be seeing double-digit increases year after year after year, which I believe speaks to the concern that counselor Jordane uh, raised and one that I know that we all share, which is, you know, we, we need to make sure costs are contained and controlled. Um, so that is the uh, that is the update, that is um, where we're at with health insurance right now. Uh, we're in the process of open enrollment at the moment, um, and uh, we look forward to coming back in front of the council and having a more thorough conversation and are happy to provide any updates uh, that the council uh, would like.
If, I'll just close on if you could share with the city council the reports relative to the calculation of the health insurance numbers.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's like, not a problem at all.
Yeah, I'd like to do the deep dive into the numbers, if you could send all of it, with any, with any supporting documents for.
Yep. And, and what I would, what I would, uh, I'm more than happy to do that, counselor, and I think um, you know, th- the time is right um, uh, for us to, and if, 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 if you want to file an order uh, to have us come back in with the brokers and, and kind of break down everything. Um, I believe there's still a standing uh, item on the finance committee's agenda that's been tabled. Um, that we could, so maybe an order doesn't even be, need to be filed, but we more than happy to provide you with all that data and documentation and have a more thorough conversation specific to health insurance.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you. Um, I just want to let everyone know that counselor Ocasio has joined us. Um, and if there's no other questions about this part, and it's just for the mayor's budget.
Uh, yes, Doc, um, Madam Chair, yes, I had a, just a quick question. Did
Go for it.
Are there any projections as to what this budget with the increase in property values and the increase in the budget is gonna cost the individual taxpayer on, let's say, and the average single-family home? There should be a projection out there, there should be some kind of calculation that's been made before the budget's been presented as to what the cost is gonna be to the individual, the individual property owner. Percentage-wise or dollar-wise? Because it seems to me it's gonna be substantial.
Thank you. I see that uh, our uh, city assessor, Deb Brunel is here and she has her hand up. Deb, do you want to address that?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, the home values right now are a work in progress. We will not have them completed until probably the end of August or September. This is a revale year for us, so everything is being broken down, taken apart and revalued. I can tell you the single-family home values are going up significantly. They will be risen greater than ten percent in value, which will be a significant increase for most people across the city, and that's for businesses as well. So we are anticipating growing our city and growing our value, but the home values are going to be higher.
That's, that's home value.
Our city, we're growing our city and we're growing our value and we're growing people who can't afford to pay these taxes anymore, which is problematic.
So that, that was Deb shared, the, the home value, what counselor Grady was asking for, what, what the anticipated tax increases gonna be for the average homeowner and, and that I know around this time last year, we were, when we looked at that, again, it's all fluid. I remember we were debating that there was a seven, six, seven percent increase for the average, for the average tax bill or whatever the case, but and then be, when the tax rate got set, that got dropped significantly because, you know, it was much more um, uh, flexible ability in the budget than we anticipated, so it's counselor Grady, my point is it's hard to say exactly right now at this time of the calendar year to determine what that increase is gonna potentially be for the average homeowner. But certainly don't want to shy away from the concern um, that folks have uh, to our average residents that are especially living paycheck to paycheck.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Thank you, mayor. Any other questions so far before we actually go into the mayor's department budget? Okay, seeing none. Um, so the mayor's budget is on page two of your uh, budget handouts. Um, I don't know if it, Jeffrey, I don't know if it makes sense to maybe share your screen or like, I don't know, the best way for us to do that, but um, mayor, did you, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, share the screen. Um, so in this budget, you'll notice um, uh, contract negotiations, you see twenty-seven thousand, seven ninety. This is a, you know, a, a strategy we put from previous conversations with counselors. Whenever we were putting the budget together, but contracts weren't ratified yet, so we didn't want to put increases in line items if contract, in, in salaried line items if contracts were ratified yet. So this, this, I think uh, this was uh, counselor McGivern's uh, idea, working together with Tanya to establish this here as a placeholder and when contracts get ratified and counselors get to review the contracts. And um, at that point, you can vote to transfer. and at that point, you can vote to transfer the funds out of here into the, that's why that number is there. And then the, the other significant impact you'll see there is the chief financial administrative officer for $150,000 and everything else is just relatively the same from previous fiscal year.
Madam Chair?
Yes, councillor Greenie.
That's my question. Item 51104, the chief financial administrative officer affectionately known as CAFO for $150,000. I'd like to know, I'd like to have some justification for that position because I know that a lot of towns around, you know, have, have town managers that handle their financial budgets with populations less than Hoyok. So this is a significant addition to the mayor's office. I mean, the mayor is the chief financial officer of the city. He has an executive assistant. You've got a city treasurer. You've got many people looking at the budget, so on and so forth. I'm just curious as to the rationale for a CAFO or CAFO or Chief Financial Administrative Officer. It seems like it's something that really needs to be explained. Thank you.
So, yeah, I'd be happy to. At the committee level meetings the past year, year and a half or so, I believe this was talked about in great length and detail. It's, it was, not only is it, has it been a recommendation from the Division of Local Services out of Department of Revenue from their three or four past financial analysis of the city. It's, it's about strengthening internal controls. You're right, you have some smaller mid-sized communities that have managers that have strong financial acumen. And, you know, here in a city of 38,000 people, your elected mayor is both internal and external managing the day-to-day, being, you know, the CFO, the CEO, I'm also the chief of staff, the public relations director. I'm also among other many hats that, that the mayor is wearing, which is fine. You know, I, I, I do that, but it's not sustainable for, you know, the type of infrastructure as a city that we have currently. The new mayor comes in, who knows what kind of background and experience that mayor is going to have. And then here we are, you know, trying to manage 170-plus million-dollar organization with elected, with elected members of the community. And so the CAFO is meant to strengthen internal controls, reduce harm, reduce opportunities for liability, also maximize on opportunities that we're missing out on to bring in more growth, more revenue. So it's, it's, it's supposed to offer that, that, that sense of management while also support continuity in our local government beyond, you know, one day when I'm not here and we get another mayor. It, you know, it really offers that, an opportunity for us to manage our city much, much better than, than how we've been managing it now or even in the past. But anybody else want to, I know there's, it's been talked about extensively. There's been numerous insights offered. If anybody else wanted to share the benefit, having a CAFO to help councillor Greenie understand the rationale.
Is there anyone else who wants to help answer this question before I go to the next councillor? Okay. Well, I mean, I'm not going to debate, but, oh, there's councillor, no, treasurer, Rory Casey.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just add on to, to what the mayor said. That the state, we're a $200 million organization. And I, and I know that that, we don't always think of ourselves that way because we're also a community. And, you know, we need to right-size the budget. I think there's a lot of places where we agree on the fact our budget is growing isn't sustainable. But at the same time, when we talk about things like opportunities for grants, we talk about what are some cost savings? What's the business plan? You know, how do we justify certain types of expenses? To be able to bring somebody in here to help the elected officials manage this vast $200 million organization that has thousands of employees, to not have a somebody that has that skillset. You know, it, it's hurting us. Are we getting by? Sure. Could we be doing a better job? Absolutely. And that is not a criticism on anybody that works for the city because I have been working for the city now for a number of years and I cannot speak more highly of the team that's in place right now. It, it really is amazing, but the progress that we see is fragile. One person leaves and it sets us all back. We need to look no further than what's happening right now in DPW, the city engineer. And I know that this is something that gets talked about at the council level all the time. It's the same thing on the finance department. Think about before we had Tanya come in as the auditor, some of the issues that we faced, right? Issues in the treasurer's office from years past, issues in the collector's office. To have somebody come in that's able to manage that is vitally important. And, you know, I, I realize that that is sticker shock, but the, the, the dollar amount that's there. But I would just say that, you know, if you look at it as an investment in ourselves, the same way that we want to invest in our parking infrastructure, the same way we want to invest in our students with new school buildings, with teachers. We want to invest in ourselves. We think about the physical infrastructure, the rolling inventory. We need to invest in our financial departments and really strengthen those internal controls. You know, and, and I think there really is nobody better that can speak to the value of, of a CAFO than somebody other than TJ Plant who's on here right now. If you think about the place that Springfield was before somebody like that came in, the issues that they were facing, massive budget deficits, everything. To be able to come in with an organizational mindset and be able to restructure and help shepherd that city into what we see now with budget surpluses, healthy free cash, healthy reserves. I think that we have somebody on the call right now that can really speak to it.
I think he just, Rory.
Huh?
I think he just got off.
Oh, he got off? Oh, well, maybe next time.
I can make him come back on if the councillor wants.
But, but anyway, that's, I mean, I, I, I think your question is, is a, is a good one councillor Greenie. And, and I know the mayor has spoken about this. I've been very clear that I think the position of treasurer needs to change drastically. The way that the finance offices are currently organized needs to change. It's not going to happen overnight. And the way for us to get there is by taking the advice of the state, looking at what other similarly sized organizations have and having, and having a CAFO in place. And with that, I'll, I will mute again.
Just one comment, just one, one comment, please.
Yeah, go for it.
I, I, I feel very uncomfortable about, about taking the advice of the state. I'm sorry. Thank you.
All righty, councillor Rivera.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me just in case?
Yes, sir.
I think for me, one of the most important pieces, I kind of wanted to reiterate on the CAFO or whatever we end up landing on in the future, if it does change or however, is that there, there is, there is a role for someone that, that holds the space of continuity as mentioned before. I think that, that is something that's important for, for our city government in general in the long run, is to find places and pockets of continuity. And, and I think that that will help us stabilize and save costs later on down the road. I agree that the treasurer role needs to be re-looked at, right? As well, I mean, mostly because these roles are, are elected as mentioned. Not to say that we're not electing highly educated people. I just believe that everyone has different strengths and sometimes these might not be their strengths. And if this is not their strength with having someone in the role that this is their strength, regardless of the matter, someone that can be hired and fired versus elected, which is a different concept, kind of helps with building that strength and stability for the future, right? But that wasn't my question. I just wanted to kind of speak on that and kind of add to that. My question was that the number 150, how did you get to that number? That's my question.
Yep, so actually, you know, the controllers, really good ones that do this work across the Commonwealth, 150 is, is okay. It's not even, but considering, you know, Hoyok, Western Mass, you know, and where people are and their skill, their, their years of experience, we might be able to, is a placeholder, a good, good place to start. But just, it's on average, looking at what other, other communities who have posted for this position, how much they're getting paid. And, and I want to try to get the best person out there in the Commonwealth because Hoyok, we, we, the city deserves, we, it's, it's, you guys have dealt with a lot. Councillors have been on here for a very long time. You know, just following the, the history, reading the last 10 years of audits, looking at the deficiencies that are just reported over and over and haven't really shown any dramatic improvements. You know, capital planning, financial forecast, like this is the stuff that any, there's businesses with $5 million budgets that invest more in how they manage their finances than we do. And, and, you know, it, it just, I, I try to cast a net there a little bit, councillor, to your question, to be sure that I can attract somebody that's, that's solid so that, so that we don't get any mistakes. That we hit the ground running and it's, there's no like, oh, we tried this person, it didn't work out. We want to, we want to really get a group, a really good person. But obviously, I'm in the mercy of the council.
No, thank, thank you for that answer. I think for me, the, the importance of hearing it is because there's, 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 again, goes with the continuity. Like whomever you hire, ideally, you would want this person to be in the role for a long time. So coming in, they have to find the way where they're going to be comfortable in being here for a while. 150 is a lot though, but I get it. I hear it. Thank you.
Hey.
I think TJ came on, if he's not in the waiting room or something.
I don't see TJ. And I don't see him in the waiting area, so I'll keep an eye on that. But I think I heard councillor Jordan, was that you?
Yeah, Tessa, what I was suggesting is if everybody's all set with the CAFO question, I had another question on this page if we're ready to. Because I assume we're going to page at some point.
Yes, yes. And if, if TJ comes back, Mayor, I will give him the opportunity to speak, but we can continue going through page two for the mayor's budget. Councillor Jordan?
Yeah, just if you could touch on with the $27,000 for expected contractual, do you have something in mind for that? And then on dues and subscription, could you walk us through what comprises the $12,000, please?
Yes, I think.
Item number, please.
Yep, I was just about to say that councillor, councillor Jordan was referring to item number five. There's code number, right? 51276, contract negotiations, $27,790. And I, Tanya, mark me if I'm wrong, I believe we were anticipating just a regular 2%.
2% for the PSA.
PSA. And councillor Greenie, councillor Jordan also asked about code number 57300, dues and subscriptions budgeted at $12,225. Tanya, do you have the, the summary breakdown in front of you? I have none of my notes in front of me.
I actually don't, but as I'm looking at it, I, I just remember an increase in one of your lines. I can try to look it up for you if you like.
One of the dues increased, we didn't reflect it, but I think we could, you know, we can settle that, moving money around. We don't have to make it complicated in this part of the process, but it includes.
Okay.
MM, it's MMA. There's a, I think there's like three different, I don't, I apologize councillors, I don't have my notes in front of me. Can you pull up the?
Maybe you could email us afterwards, Mayor, what, what comprises the $12,000?
Yeah, it's the, it's the, the, the national.
Conference of mayors?
Conference of mayors, yeah, the national one. Then there's the MMA municipal fee. I think there's the mayor's association. I think it was like, those are the three different ones.
I wanted to ask you about, in your opinion, you've obviously been doing the job for a couple of years now. How much real value are you getting out of some of those organizations? Because we, we had stretches of 10-plus years where we did not participate in a great number of those organizations.
Yep.
So in particular, like the National Conference of Mayors, some of those have been of dubious value, at least to past mayors. So I wanted, MMA, I think has a, you know, more meaningful value locally here. But can you kind of address that and, and are we getting a good bang for, for this? Because that, although it isn't up a lot from last year, you know, 10%, but historically to the norm, that is up a lot because we just didn't do a lot of these. You could let us know, please.
Yep, yep. The US Conference of Mayors, it's just that tech, that, that dollar amount is like $3,400. And honestly, I mean, yeah, I, so the US Conference of Mayors, I don't engage in. You know, there, there is a, a annual conference that happens at Washington DC, but it happens during the same time as the MMA annual meeting and trade show in Boston. And to your comment councillor, I find the MMA much, much incredibly, much more valuable than the US Conference of Mayors has been. Now, does, doesn't mean to say that it's not, you know, when Hoyok's name is on that list, and I, you know, I do get the, the communication and there's different things that people from that, that organization do call and interview and survey. There's value there. But as far as just educational, as much as MMA has been for me, it, it doesn't even, doesn't, doesn't need it.
MMA is 8,000, Mayor, just so you know, that's your two things that you have in there.
So it's only two dues?
I only see two dues in there.
Yeah. So 3,489, I think that went up a little bit for the US Conference of Mayors and MMA is 8,159.
Okay. Let's set another way, could you live without the US Conference of Mayors if we did just the MMA one?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
I do see, I don't see any hands right now, but I do see that TJ joined us again. Mayor, do you? Would you like?
Yeah, I, I wanted to be sure that we were, TJ, councillor Greenie was just asking about the value of having a CAFO or comptroller. And so treasurer Rory, you know, talked a little bit about Springfield and if there was anything you could add to the value of this discussion in your role in Springfield and how important it was. Or maybe you didn't find it important at all. Be honest with us. But it's, it's, it's an investment that we've been working on here and, and I need to make sure that people feel good about it.
Okay, sure. So for those that don't know, but I assume most of you know that Springfield was under a finance control board from 2004 to 2009. It disbanded and when it disbanded and the city went back to home rule, they created the chief administrator and financial officer position. The Chief Administrator and Financial Officer position, and at that time, I think there was only one in the Commonwealth and that was Boston. And the concept was to mirror it after the way the governor's office was, where they have a Secretary of Administration and Finance. And the goal was kind of just take the, you know, day to day administrative and financial and, um, you know. Uh, tasks off the mayor's plate and give it to someone that's been, you know, professionally trained. Uh, proper education, you know, usually a master's degree, uh, that, that understands kind of. The day to day operations and, uh, and government, but also to bring in a lot of fiscal planning. And multi-year financial plan, capital improvement plan, uh, linking. All the financial departments to make sure that they're all, uh, talking and working together towards the same common goal, which is. Help me to run the city, but provide services to the residents and, um. I've been doing, I did it for, uh, eleven plus years, uh, in Springfield and it, uh, it, well. I would argue it worked out well, you know, we've had, um, record-setting reserves based upon strategic planning and monitoring the budget. We've had, um, cost savings, we've, uh, the, another big thing that, um, Springfield. Didn't do well, but is doing well now, is costing out the, um, contra- collective bargaining agreements. With unions to make sure that it's affordable, uh, not just in the short term, cause, uh, but on the long term. So there's a lot of pieces of the job that, um, can really assist an organization, um. Such as Hoyoke to bring it all together and be the kind of conduit point person. Uh, to make sure all financial matters are, um, properly brought. Uh, before the city council and vetted and making sure it's affordable, that the long-term impacts, uh, are. Are analyzed in all those different parts of the job, I mean, it's. Um, I, I would argue and believe. That is why a number of communities are starting to create CFO positions, I know. Methuen, I think Lynn's creating one now, there's a number of communities that are just starting to create it, so. It's no longer just a CFO, it's no longer just, you know, positions that are doing their own thing, it's. One person bringing everybody together and working, uh, for a common, for the common goal, I guess.
And, and to, to great, councillor Grainey's point, like, the, the mayor is that person in our form of government. Uh, the challenge there, focusing solely internally when there's. External things demanding your attention and so it becomes. Difficult to, um, keep up with, um, to have that, that internal focus. Uh, on that, uh, which is so critical. Again, like, I do the best I can and, 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 and I, I multitask and I know what I know. But it's, I could tell you, it, it can burn out, it can be a burnout for, for anybody and, and if. The next mayor doesn't have that level of skill, um, you know, then, then we're potentially putting our city backwards.
Yeah, and I think the, the big thing is, is, um, you're a hundred percent, I mean. Uh, the mayor has so many hats to wear, so many tasks, uh, that they need to do. Uh, in terms of the public, in terms of internal managing all the departments and the department heads that all report to the person, to the mayor, excuse me. And that, as they, it's just, it's a, it's a challenge to then add on. Uh, all the financial and administrative HR and all that stuff that, um, if you coordinate it all right. It can, it can move seamlessly through city government.
Okay, TJ, one question?
Sure.
Does, does the CFO have any aids or assistance?
Uh, I think it depends on the organization and, and what the organization has in terms of resources. Uh, they, they can, I mean, in, in Springfield, where we were much larger, so we have. We had a, a, a few analysts and a budget director and a, um, I actually had a deputy CFO as well when I was there. And, but that is to run a billion dollar organization, I don't know if that is necessary. What are you, a hundred and fifty, two hundred million roughly? Budget wise, mayor?
Hundred and seventy plus.
Yeah, so you're a hundred and seventy plus and that's, that's just, you know, that's operating plus capital plus all the areas.
And we're talking about a, potentially doing a consolidated department. You know, supervised by the CFO, so you have some staff capacity there that.
I think just tapping into the natural staff that you have is probably first and foremost, the, the biggest thing is. Making sure that all the, all those are coordinated and. You could determine down the road if, if, if an analyst or, or whatever is needed to, to help along with that, but, um. Just having a person dedicated with the mindset of pulling everything together and, and a, a, um. I guess keep saying cohesive, but in, in a format or in, in a manner that just tells a story and says, okay, we're comfortable that. Yes, this is affordable, or no, we can't afford this, a great collective bargaining agreement, because we, you know. We may have the money now, but in two and a half, two and a half, three years from now. Uh, or hey, just be aware that the retro is gonna cost X number of dollars if you agree to that, um, so I think. It's been very valuable to Springfield, I think if you check in with Springfield's leadership, I think you'd realize that. Uh, they continue to lean on the position, uh, in a way that, um. Has helped the city grow and, um, really thrive, uh, since the control board left.
Just the reason I ask is these positions sometimes have a tendency to grow, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bacon?
Thank you, Madam President, um, I just want to make the comment that. We have to keep in mind that with a population of thirty eight thousand. While we are not enjoying growth in residents in our city. When we're building the government bigger and bigger, we're putting the costs of that. On a tax base that while it is growing a little bit more now than it has been. Has had very, very small growth over the years. And so I think it gets really hard, uh, to compare ourselves to the third largest city in the state. When looking at building the structure of the government, and so some of us are looking for. What the offsets of. Lower costs for something, um, in some areas will be. In order to even consider adding yet again, more to the size of the overhead of government. And I do understand the argument for the position, I've run organizations, I understand the value of finance. But the way we're structured, our mayor, even if we have a CFO. Is still the head of all the finance in the city, even if we create a consolidated. Finance department, so I think that's the part that is hard for some of us to find the balance of. The cost in the budget and the affordability for the taxpayers, thank you.
Thank you councillor, um, I don't see anyone else's hand up right now, I had a quick question, um, probably maybe for TJ. This is a follow-up on councillor Rivera's question, um, the one hundred fifty. Uh, proposed salary by the mayor, do you find that that is? In your experience comparable, um, and, or is that competitive, um, for what? What we're looking for?
Uh, yeah, I would say, uh, one fifty is the number, yes, that would be competitive for, uh, certainly for the region. Sorry, my daughter just got home from gymnastics, we're giving the dog bark, um, no, that would be competitive for the region, um, and competitive in the, in the job. Because most people with the necessary skill set for this job, uh, would command. Probably that or higher, uh, even in potentially Western Mass or other town managers, which you could compare it with town managers. You know, some make in that, in that vicinity out this way, so, uh, I would say. One fifty is in the ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, the manager in South Hadley, South Hadley, hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You know, to, to, just to put it in perspective.
Thank you, um, any other questions on the mayor's budget, any parts of the mayor's budget here? Right, I am not seeing any. Um, so we're going to keep moving forward, um, I just want to thank TJ. For being here and for, um, coming back, um, and, you know, thank you. Uh, to the mayor, um, we are going to move forward on the agenda. And go to the Office of the City Treasurer.
Thanks everyone, I'm gonna jump off now, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, this is page six in your budget packets. I'm going to. And thank you Jeffrey for sharing your screen. Um. Rory is here, is there anything that you wanted to address first, um? Before I open it up for questions?
Sure, so, uh, thanks everybody, um, you know, I, I put together, uh, uh. The mayor sent out a directive, uh, to all department heads, um, asking us to. Uh, present a budget, uh, that saw increases no greater than, uh, two percent. Um, I believe my budget came in, um. Well under that, um. The, one thing that I will note, because this is gonna, you're gonna see this throughout the budget. And, um, I'm gonna reference lines five, one, one, three, two, five, one, one, two, five. And five, one, one, three, one. And what you're gonna see is, uh, that those are new positions, um. They are not in fact new personnel, um, there was recently, uh, contract negotiated with NAGE. Uh, union and part of that, uh, negotiation and, and I would defer certainly to the mayor. And other folks that were party to those negotiations, um, but just since it's the first time councillors and the public. Will see this, um, a number of positions, uh, were retitled. Um, and new grades, uh, were attached to them, it does not necessarily mean, uh. Major changes in, uh, dollar amounts or, uh, the increases. Uh, but now what happens is each budget, uh, each department, uh, has, uh, folks, uh, within it. And kind of a grade within that department, so, um, you, you'll see that the. Um, Deputy Treasurer, the Senior Deputy Treasurer, um, and the Floating Clerk. Are now, uh. Payroll Specialist, Senior Payroll Specialist and Administrative Assistant. Um, so I just wanted to make note of that, um, in case there were any questions. Uh, the, uh. Administrative Assistant, uh, the Floating Clerk is shared between my office and the Tax Collector's Office. Um, and, uh, the Payroll, uh, Specialist and Senior Payroll Specialist. Um, are the folks that, uh, work directly on, uh, processing the city's payroll, so. Uh, it made sense, uh, that their titles be changed. Um, especially as we are, you know, thinking ahead to, you know, how offices may be reorganized in the future. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions, uh, that the councillors, uh, may have, uh, with my budget.
Thank you, Rory, I see, uh, councillor Ocasio and then councillor Jordan.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Rory, can you repeat those, um, codes again, cause you went a little too fast for me, sorry.
I, I apologize, um, so I was referencing lines five, one, one, three, two. Five, one, one, two, five. And five, one, one, three, one. And those three positions are replacing. The, uh, long time existing positions of five, one, one, oh, three. Five, one, one, oh, five and five, one, one, oh, seven.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Anything else Carmen, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, councillor Jordan?
I guess, uh, Rory. How much are we paying for payroll service in the city? Overall, between clerks and general expense?
Um, uh, really, I mean, it's what you see, uh, in the budget in front of you, um, the, the clerks. That we have, um, the payroll specialist and the senior payroll specialist, um. They, uh, process all the payroll, uh, in the city. Um, we use our enterprise ERP system, uh, which was formerly known as Munis, um. Uh, I'm sure you, you're all familiar with that, it, the, they're, the brand name changed, it's, it's still the same system. It's been upgraded, uh, but it's enterprise ERP by Tyler Tech. Um, I mean, obviously, we pay for some check stock, um, you know, uh, items like that, but. We're moving in the direction of something called employee self-service. Right now, uh, which is actually gonna cut down on the amount of printed materials, so no longer will we need to be providing. Um. Although we would upon request, uh, but rather than defaulting to pay paper, uh, direct deposit stubs and. Um, W twos and some of the other ancillary, um, payroll related, uh, expenses. It'll all become digital, uh, where folks will be able to access that and historical data going back. Um, that'll all live on a server, uh, so that'll cut down on the total amount of paper that we have to purchase. Um, and the expense of mailing those out annually, um. I don't know if that answers your question specifically, um.
Um, so you're saying it's this hundred and ten thousand for the clerks plus some operating expenses for paper?
Yep, essentially, yep, and, and, you know, some, some, uh, you know, uh. Costs, uh, related to, you know, the, the software that we use, uh, things like that.
Have you done an analysis to compare that versus using like an ADP service, like what would that cost per year?
Yeah, so, so that's, I, I haven't done a, I haven't done a full-throated analysis, um, I, and. And I, I'd be more than happy to, um, I, I know that this has come up before, I will say that, um. I have spoken with another entity, uh, within the city, uh, the Holyoke Gas and Electric. Uh, because I was curious, they use ADP. And to, come to find out that a lot of what they use ADP for. Um, they still have a fair, they still need the staff internally to help process the payroll, I mean. The clerks here have to enter the, the, or in this case, the payroll specialists, um, they enter in the timesheets, they enter in the hours. They make sure the longevity, um, uh, payments are incorrectly, there's still a lot of work that even if we went to a. A third-party processor that we would still need to do internally and, um, you know, I, I do know that. Um, there had been some analysis done in the past, uh, prior to my time here. Uh, and there was not, uh, necessarily a cost savings, um, and I do know that. With some of the new technology that has been introduced, uh, to help kind of make things moving fa- uh, smoother, um. Some of those third-party processors for organizations like ours are, are not. Be, are not as popular as maybe they had been in the past, I'll also say that, um, you know. One of the conversations that I've been having, um, and this relates to kind of this larger potential consolidation of. Of financial, uh, services and, and departments, um, is how can we? Um, because this is just for the city, right, so everything that you see in the general. Admin budget that you see right here, it does not include the school department, they have their own payroll, uh, personnel. I mean, I mentioned gas and electric, I, I have been having some conversations about how can we consolidate some of those. Um, to. That would translate into a cost savings in the future, um, but, you know, those conversations are ongoing and obviously would be subject to. Collective bargaining and, and, you know, everything else that goes along with it, but I'm, I'm open to any idea. Uh, to find cost savings and build inefficiencies, uh, that we can.
That's appreciated, um. Again, Hoyoke Government has all these silos and. One of the frustrations that I hear from taxpayers. one of the frustrations, uh, that I hear from taxpayers is you have lots of duplicate areas doing the same thing instead of things being centralized. Um, it would be, you know, you figure we're a hundred and fifty years old at this point. Wh- when are these conversations gonna ever had? It's always, you know, those are great ideas. We'll get back to you or, um, but nobody ever does. And, you know, I, I don't know where the initiative comes to, to tackle these type of things. It's just at some point, you know, these, these are ideas that I would like to see vetted. They're old ideas. But the reason they're old is because they never get proper vetting. I would just encourage the people day to day to say, okay, you got the G and E doing one thing and the water department doing another with housing doing another, with the schools doing another, and we're doing another. Um, you know, I'm, I'm obviously concerned too about, you know, who, how is payroll being entered in the, in various departments like the police and others? Are they, is that all being handled by your clerks? Is that all being done the same and uniformly between all the departments? You know, is all that being handled centrally for city employees? Um. I would like to see more standardized practices. It's, you know, it's come to my attention. There are non-standardized practices that some departments do it one way, other departments do it other ways. So that continues to need to be reviewed. The, the other thing I would mention to you is, um, you've struggled to fill some of these roles. Um, are, are all your positions filled at this point?
They are, yes.
And you feel you have a strong team now at this point?
I do. I have an amazing team. Yeah.
All right, that's.
And, and, and I would say that the team I have, the team that we have, cause it's not just my team. I mean, I mean, obviously they work for all of us. Um, and, and work, uh, with all of the departments in the city, especially, uh, folks that work in the treasurer's office, um, and any of the finance offices. Um. The way we are structuring things, the, the conversations, I, I, the conversations that you're talking about are taking place. Um, and, uh, it's one of the reasons why, you know, we keep beating the drum, you know, to, to kind of centralize, uh, to build those efficiencies and to make those investments, you know? And, and as I mentioned in response to councillor Graney's question about the CAFO, it doesn't happen overnight. There's always gonna be some overlap, right? So, um, is the cost savings gonna take place in year one? Or is it gonna take place in year two and then even more in year three as we build these types of efficiencies? And when is that first domino going to fall? And I, I will say that the very things that, that you've been talking about and others have for a long time, trying to bring folks together, trying to bring the schools and the city, uh, operations, uh, more closely aligned. How can we loop in gas, electric, or water, um, to do that? Um, I, I'm very encouraged by what's happening, um, and, you know, I think it, it's my hope um, and belief that the budget that you see in fiscal twenty-six is gonna start, uh, speaking to those, um, types of changes. Uh, because, you know, it does take time, uh, to, to start getting the buy-in and building, um, building those efficiencies into place.
The city council and the mayor have made investments in your department and personnel. I know you mentioned that your department's only growing at under two percent. I, I would say it's growing at more than two percent. The, um, two hundred and thirty-six thousand was the, uh, personnel expense in fiscal twenty-three. Two fifty-eight was the budget for this year. It's now two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, uh, proposed for fiscal twenty-five. I'm not saying that's a bad thing.
No, no, and I can, I can absolutely speak to that. So the, the, you have been, and thank you. You added a position last year and it has been, uh, 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 great. And that small change is what's gonna help catapult. When I talked about what domino is gonna fall first, that was a big part of it. Um, so thank you and all the other counselors who supported that. Um, what I would also just note is that the, when you look at that, what was budgeted for last year, um, we knew that we weren't going to have, um, those people on day one. And I do believe that some of what you see as budgeted here, uh, reflects cuts that were made during the supplemental budget process. Um, so it's not like, you know, for example, uh, the floating clerk, uh, was hired at thirty thousand, uh, and then they got a nine thousand dollar bump. Um, that position was unfilled, uh, and, and that's what you see reflected there. If you look at the total amount of the budget, um, uh, in this department, it's, it's gone down, um, uh, it's gone down, uh, close to fifty-plus thousand, almost sixty thousand, um, uh, from, from previous year to this year. Um.
I wanna see if there's gonna be supplementals, though. That's one of the things.
I know.
Is this a hundred? And I, I mean, what, actually, it's kind of a mayor question. I don't know if the mayor's still with it. I, one of my overarching questions is, is this the theoretical one hundred percent budget, right? Cause one of the things I'm concerned about is, um, I don't wanna be too critical of it, but one, one of the things that is, am, am I really voting on a city budget? Or am I really only voting on one-third of a city budget because then there'll be a supplemental in September and then a supplemental right before we set up the tax rate? So, you know, it looks like, and of course, I, I don't, you don't have any more room to grow, so I don't have to worry about that, cause you're already at the level. Um, but if what we've seen in the past is, you know, you come in, i- it comes in and it's one percent more, but then the hammer comes down in the supplementals and then it, as it keeps getting closer, it, it keeps, it keeps growing. Um. Is this budget here an attempt to actually fully fund everything? Or is there anything intentionally underfunded in this budget? That it's a to-be-determined, we'll maybe add more later.
Want me to jump in, Madam President?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so, um, I remember first-year budget was a lot of that. Um, that, that strategy I know was, was being done as a way to limit increases. It's, hey, we're gonna underfund this, but we know it's in the budget somewhere, so come to us later for a transfer and we'll take care of it then. Not necessarily the best practice, but a practice to get you through, um, uh, you know, the year end and with a budget to start July one. Uh, that's a practice that Tanya and I have been trying to figure out to slowly get away from. I think year two, we did a little better getting away from that. Um, this year, I think we did much, you know, again, improving and, and getting away from that. Like, for example, I think utilities is, uh, utility accounts and, um, other contracted services with vendors where a second payment could be made in January one, right? Like, tho- those, those were the, the, the traditional practices of cutting where we could find money in the budget later. So those have been funded. The thing is, is what, what's hard to tell is when there's like, you know, you get your projected of what you think what your energy bill is gonna be, and then later you find out that it's much more expensive than what you thought. And so as far as, I think supplementals, maybe supplemental is the wrong term. Cause supplemental doesn't necessarily mean that we're adding, shouldn't necessarily mean that we're adding more to the budget, cause it's, it's, it's rightsizing. It's, it's reducing areas that we funded and turned out it didn't need to be funded and then making sure that other areas are funded adequately that were underfunded and we didn't know of earlier on. There, but to your question, councillor, there isn't a lot of, I can't, I mean, I, as we go department by department, line by line, um, you know, I, I'm sure some will pop up that we could talk about, but off the top of my head right now, there, it's, there's probably some of that. There isn't a lot of, a lot of that. Tanya was very adamant about like, and, and, and she's right about, no, let's, if it's, if it's contracted for X amount, let's fund it at that amount, right? And same thing with other, other aspects of the budget that have that similar, uh, issue.
Okay. I, I appreciate that, Mayor, and I appreciate Tanya.
But it's not perfect, councillor. It's not perfect.
Right, and, and things like revenues and, you know, we don't hold you that. I mean, you can only do either run rate or your best estimate on a, you know, three-year historical average on some of these things. Um, you, you do the best you can, but where, where it's like known expenses and we're just like, oh, I, I haven't made up my mind yet type stuff. Um, and then we get hit with a fifty thousand here and a forty thousand there, and I just wanna make sure that as far as the expense side, this represents ninety-nine percent, you would say, of where you see where we're gonna be at, or you shouldn't, we shouldn't see major variances from this unless it was ex- completely unexpected, basically.
Maybe ninety percent? Maybe ninety percent.
Okay. Well, ninety percent would be six million dollars more, so I hope it's more than ninety percent.
And remember in year one, when, when I was first working on this budget, it was like, Tanya, remember it was like a two million dollar deficit and she was like, here you go, Mayor, how are you gonna balance this? And, you know, I just inherited this thing and yes, we did make drastic cuts, so you didn't have to do it. Um, and yes, it did undercut, it did underfund things that we had to figure out later. Again, that was a strategy at that time, but over the year, it's been getting better and better as we really try to get a grasp of these things. I've been challenging departments, um, as much as I can to find those inefficiencies and that we can reduce or eliminate or consolidate, um, so that, uh, and, and in a lot of ways, it has helped. Tanya's been really working hard and, you know, leveraging, um, new revenue opportunities and c- closing old deficits. You know, those, those liabilities that have been on our books that have been costing us money that could have been used for something else, right? Like, we've been closing, you know, those deficiencies, which has been extremely helpful. So these little things that have been going on that has been helping us build capacity slowly but surely.
Okay, thank you. Um, Rory, just a couple more items on your budget, um, in the expense side.
Yes, sir.
If you could, um, you both boosted professional services by three thousand and, um, I see land court expenses down. Is that something that you, that's a fair estimate, you think, at eighty thousand? And I'm assuming you've centralized postage?
Correct.
It's up ten thousand and there was a postage increase.
Yep, there was a postage increase and, and we've also not only centralized, but, um, we've, we've absorbed, um, a lot of the, um, certified mail, uh, that, that has to be produced for different, uh, legal reasons. And if you think that, you know, so much, so much of that type of work slowed down during the pandemic, um, to, to look at trends, it, it really skews that. Um, so, so postage is reflective of our, of our needs. Um, the, the.
Is there, can I ask a question on that, though? In the budget report, it shows that only eleven hundred and seventy dollars was spent in the first six months. Is this money's being retracted back to your central budget?
No, no, so I.
Allocated by department.
Yeah, no, I, so the way that works is, um, I get, I've got some reports, um, based on the usage, um, and that will get trued up before the end of the fiscal year. So it's not money going into, I don't think I've transferred any money out of, um, out of postage. Um, the other items that you mentioned, the professional services, um, so that is something that, um, the additional increase there is for a couple of things. We have been, as part of the Munis upgrade, I know that most of that was funded through ARPA, uh, but there are some, uh, reoccurring, uh, training expenses, um, that I have been paying for out of my budget. Um, so, uh, whether it relates to payroll or other types of, uh, revenue recognition, um, uh, cash receipts, um, some of the, uh, they, they're called pace days, um, where we actually, uh, have, like, just this week alone, we had a pace day that was attended by everybody in the assessor's office, representatives from my office, representative from the tax collector's office. Uh, and those pace days, um, uh, had been, uh, funded through this line in my office. Um, so as we're trying to continue building out more training, um, and get, uh, folks to start using the technology to the best extent possible, uh, that's, that's what that increase, uh, is there for. And then the land court expenses, um, I can, uh, you know, that is the one line that, uh, there is the potential, uh, in the future, I might come back and need some additional funding in. Uh, we're kind of in this precarious spot right now where, uh, the Supreme Court, uh, has issued, uh, a ruling, um, that essentially, uh, has thrown, uh, tax foreclosures into this gray area. And so a lot of our land court action relates to trying to foreclose on tax liens. And as we're trying to strategize in this kind of uncharted territory that we find ourselves in, um, you know, I felt comfortable reducing that line, but I did mention to the mayor and to Tanya and, you know, certainly figured it was gonna come up at this meeting, that depending on the way things shake out, um, I may need to come back. Um, but it's also the place where I feel I can, you know, kind of ratchet down a little bit where the past couple of years since I've been here, I've had a ratchet up activity, uh, if that makes sense.
It does. Um, but again, I would ask you to either use a historical average or what. Um, the, but I'm glad you brought up the Supreme Court's case and, um, that, for people that may or may not be following that, that relates to predatory tax foreclosure. What has been described certainly by the plaintiffs as, uh, predatory tax foreclosures. What essentially is happening in that instance is people, the city, some cities would go out and, uh, sell off debt and then people would foreclose on people, take their homes for fractions of what they're worth and not return the, uh, equity back to the homeowner. So for example, in an extreme illustration, you could have somebody with a two hundred thousand dollar house with a five thousand dollar tax bill, and then they would get foreclosed on, and the predatory practitioner of this, uh, would essentially get somebody's house for five thousand dollars, the amount that was owed on the taxes. And it precludes people from getting their equity. The SJC has said, no, 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 that's illegal and you need to give these people the equity in their home. They get the difference between the sale of the home and, uh, the amount that was owed by, to the community. Um. Rory, are, Hoyoke's not involved in any predatory, uh, tax foreclosure, I would hope. No, we're not doing that.
Absolutely not. And it is something that frustrates me to no end when I hear these stories. When I, we were in a meeting earlier today having this very conversation. Um, there are a number of communities that have done what is called, uh, tax lien, um, assignment auctions, uh, where it's not even the city. The city is selling the debt to a third party and the third party is foreclosing and then selling these homes. This is something that even prior to the, the Supreme Court ruling, US Supreme Court, um, and then more recently, uh, Supreme Judicial Court ruling, um, based on, um, some, you know, stuff happening in the state, um, that I, I've been very opposed to. Um, I will tell you this, the properties that we foreclose on were very strategic. We do not take properties where people are living. Um, more often than not, we're taking properties, uh, this doesn't mean a lien's not placed on the property. If you don't pay your taxes, you're gonna have a lien placed on your property. We're going to, we're going to collect one way, uh, or the other, um, whether it's when the property's disposed of through private transaction or through some other means. The properties that we foreclose on are our problem properties. They're properties that more often than not are boarded up. Um, they are properties that have long since fallen into disrepair, that are blighting neighborhoods. Um, and uh, attracting um, all kinds of activity uh, that we we don't want to have. Um, so those are the, those are the things that we're focusing on, and and. One of the things that I'm concerned about, and this is what we talked about, um, earlier today, is that. Well, I would love to see uh, that predatory practice be done with. For the, and what the Supreme Judicial Court has said is that, right now, the practice itself is not necessarily unconstitutional. Um, but the, but municipalities don't necessarily have a mechanism if you did. You know, for example, foreclose on a property and dispose of it, and let's just say, you know, made a hundred thousand dollars, right? How would you get that property back into the hands of the of the owner? So DLS has put out some guidance on on how municipalities should handle that. What I can tell you and and anyone else, all the other counselors and anyone else listening is. That is not a position that Holyoke finds itself in. Uh, the properties that we we dispose of, uh, and they all go in front of the council one way or the other. Um, are, the, there is no equity. The, the, the costs uh, associated with possibly the demolition of the property, the cleanups, the boardups. Um, the costs in land court, uh, the back taxes that were owed on it. Uh, are greater than the assessed value in many cases and far greater than whatever we would receive. Um, so, so no, this is something I'm very passionate about, um, because it is something that I am concerned about. My, my concern, however, is what the Supreme Judicial Court has called for is a legislative fix. And while there needs to be a legislative fix, I do worry about, um. What that will look like, and I want to make sure that the needs of gateway cities such as ourselves. Are are taken into account, uh, and that the bad practices that exist in other communities, we're not penalized for. Um, so absolutely, um, it's it's certainly a concern. It's something that uh, we are all paying very close attention to, and uh, it is ever evolving. Um, but it is, uh, as far as that equity theft, uh, which is what the kind of term of art is. Um, that isn't anything that we participate in or uh, would would have anything to do with.
Yeah, cuz we're we're not here in Hoyouk to swindle people out of their life savings.
Absolutely not, no.
And that's not who we are.
And 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 the concerns that get raised uh, at the council, uh, are are concerns we hear as well. They're the, the, the folks that call you, you counselor and other counselors and, you know, uh, have a hard time paying that tax bill. Are the very same people that we work with on a daily basis. When they get that letter, they find out about the lien. They think just because this is taking place, they're gonna get kicked out of their home. And they call us and uh, sometimes in tears, terrified. And the very first thing I tell everyone is that, don't worry, that's not what we're in the business of. We want to help you get back on track, and we will use every tool that we have in our toolbox to help you get back on track. The fact you came to the office, made a phone call to the office, that is a a a show of good faith. It's a good faith effort to get yourself back on track, because however they fell behind, whatever the circumstances were. They're still human. They still have the right to live in a home, uh, to the equity that they invested in their home. They have that right to that. Um, the city has its responsibilities, um, you know, and the people who own homes have responsibility. To make sure their taxes are paid, but we will never kick anybody out of their house.
Right, and 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 when the house is ultimately sold, you know. We'll get whatever owed to us, but I don't want one penny more than what's actually legally owed to us, you know?
Absolutely.
Or ethically owed to us.
Yep.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, counselor. Thank you, Rory. Um, counselor.
Madam, please.
Oh, I'll call on you. I actually, I have.
People identify the object code, because it's very difficult to follow without it.
Okay, yep, we will do our best. Everyone, please, uh, you know, if you're asking about a specific line. I will try to keep track as well. Um, counselor, divine.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, hopefully you can hear me. Just one, first of all, I'd like to thank all the department heads, the mayor, and everybody for putting their budgets together. I would ask, though, in a very polite way, that city counselors, when they have questions. If they could limit it for the time being to let other city counselors, um, ask their questions, and then they can come back around. To ask further questions. I think I've been waiting for twenty minutes just to ask two questions. So if I could do that, if I could extend that um, kindness to other city counselors. So everybody gets a chance to ask their questions, I'd appreciate it. Uh, my question to the treasurer is under professional services, five, three, zero, one, zero. Rory, can you just explain that whole line there?
Yep, absolutely. So, um, a couple of things that uh, we paid for out of that line. I mentioned the PACE training. Um, we also uh, paid for some, uh, you know, folks in different offices. Um, to get advanced Excel training, um, because. You know, as we're trying to move into a more professionalized operation, a more uniformed approach on how departments. Uh, are processing their own internal cash receipts and turning things over to us. Uh, better use of technology and software tools rather than pen and paper. Uh, is vitally important. It makes our jobs easier. Um, it makes everyone's life easier, so we did uh. Purchase, uh, well, we actually brought in somebody from HCC uh, to do some advanced Excel training uh, that was offered uh, to. Uh, folks, um, so those are some of the items that we use our professional services uh, line uh, for.
Okay, thank you, Rory. And the only other question I had was under borrowing um, certification. Five, three, zero, four, zero, if you could explain that as well, please?
Yep, absolutely. So, um, that is, uh, when we, um, when we do borrowing. Um, whether it's short term or long term, um, there is some uh, costs associated with that. Um. Sometimes, uh, the costs associated with that are are built into uh, the the borrowing. Um, I didn't have a full understanding on that, and that's why last year, uh, I had a request at twenty-five. You'll see the actual expended as greater than that, and that's because as, um, we get this money in. And we borrow for it, depending on how those loans are structured. Um, just like when you do closing costs on a home or or maybe a home equity line, there's costs associated with that. Uh, sometimes they're built in, sometimes you have to pay out of pocket. So that uh, five thousand dollars is there. We do expect to have to do some long-term borrowing uh, this fiscal year. Um, as the auditor mentioned, uh, our debt service as a whole has gone down. Um, but that is because we haven't taken on any long-term debt in a number of years. Um, we have been carrying certain projects forward with short-term notes. Um, and getting grant money, uh, whether it's MSBA or S R funds, other types of funds to be able to. Pay some of that back, uh, without having to go to a long-term note, but we are in a position now where this year we will. Um, and so that is what that expense would go towards.
Um, thank you very much. I really appreciate all the work you guys have been doing. Thank you.
Of course.
All right, um, I'm not seeing any other hands or comments or questions for our treasurer. Uh, last chance. Okay, thank you, Rory. Um. And, um, our tax collector is actually needs to leave a little early, so, um, I would like to. Sort of move in the initial order that we were planning on going, um, and uh, just move uh, the tax collector up next. Um, Laura is here, um, and this is page seven, please. Um. Laura, is there anything that you wanted to uh, discuss or talk about before we open it up for questions?
Hi, Madam President, I'm Katie, uh, and I'm. Um, there's not a whole lot of movement on in my budget. Uh, the only thing I would, we point out is the tax title certification.
Um, Madam President, it's kind of hard to hear.
Oh, can you hear me now?
That's a, that's a, that's, yeah, that's better. Thank you.
I'm sitting still in my office, but.
It it like, it's not, it's not super clear. We can hear you, but it's it's definitely, there's just like a little bit of an echo.
Oh, okay. Well, let me know if you have any trouble hearing me. I will talk a little slower.
Okay.
Um, the only two lines I would really bring up would be tax title certification. And the advertising lines, um, unfortunately, without knowing exactly how many properties we will be putting leads on. Which is, of course, based on who makes their payments, um, prior to that deadline. Those numbers can certainly fluctuate, but other than that, um, there's not really much else to say, but I. Am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I see a hand up, hold on. Maybe. Oh, Counselor McGoss Smith.
I just have a quick question around the meaning of the line five, four, two, one, zero, around parking tickets. Um, wh- what does that mean? And it looks like it's gone up seven hundred dollars. So I was just trying to figure out what that meant, that you had parking tickets as one of your expenses.
Yes, so actually, I just received them in the mail today. I, uh, my budget covers the police department's ticket books. That they get, um, they are very expensive. Uh, I was just, like I said, I just received. Them today, uh, forty booklets, which is a thousand tickets, uh, cost sixteen hundred dollars. It is a service that is not done by by very many companies. Um, so they kind of have a stronghold on this. I have reached out to both the police department. And Ted and Jamie in our purchasing department to try to see if this new technology. There is a way for, um, the police department to write tickets. In any other way than this, uh, than these books. Um, so far, I'm not aware of any other option at the moment, and unfortunately, each police officer needs their own book. Um, so, yeah, but that's, that's what that line is.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okie doke. I'm not seeing anyone else. So I'm gonna say that we will move forward, and thank you, Laura, for staying on, being here.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
So moving forward, back to the initial agenda, um, the assessor's office, that is page five. In your budgets. And we are joined by Deb.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Deb. Do you want to go through anything, um, in particular before we open it up for questions?
Um, the only thing I'd like to point out really is my principal clerk. Uh, has been changed to administrative assistant. So you see that line. Five, one, one, oh, three. Is now five, one, one, two, five. And. It's the same position as the principal clerk, it's just different titles according to the union now. And. The only other thing, I used to have a line for. Assessment update under expenses, five, three, zero, nine, zero. That line encompassed my Patriot software, our valuation software. And our tax billing services. What has happened is our software has been moved out of our department and is now at the IT department where it should be. So I have a decrease in my budget from that. And. The remainder of that has been moved into professional assessment services, five, three, zero, one, zero, to pay for the tax billing service.
Okay, thank you. Were there any counselors with any questions? Uh, Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Debbie, in light of the revale. Do you anticipate greater either professional assistance or additional cost relative to the five-year revale?
Um, I don't anticipate additional cost other than what I have in the budget. My five-year revale has already been accounted for. And in that line is also. The continued, um, required cyclical inspections as well. So if I break down that forty-two, five for professional assessment services. I have my revale certification, my cyclical inspections. The salary for the third board member, which is only five hundred dollars. And the vendor tax billing services that encompass the forty-two, five. I don't anticipate additional expenses from that.
Debbie, I was a couple minutes late to the meeting cuz I had to go to the school building meeting before this meeting, and I wanted to ask you about overlay.
Mm-hmm.
What's budgeted for overlay for this coming fiscal year, uh, on the proposed recap? And how did you get to that number?
Um, I believe Tanya put seven fifty in there. And that is the number she worked on based on what I need. Since it's a revale year, we need a higher limit. Than we do in normal, normal years. Normal years is regularly five. We've gone to seven fifty for two thousand twenty-five because of the revale. And that follows a pattern. It used to be every three years for the revale. Now it's every five. So if you look back to two thousand twenty, the revale, the overlay was higher then. As well.
You're predicting a ten percent or more increase in residential.
Yes.
Which is gonna be, uh, I mean, well, that's a lot. Um, obviously, we know what the market is. Um, that'll be good for the city in one respect. Um, it'll certainly increase the ceiling, which gives us the capacity to increase taxes. You don't have to increase taxes as a result of that, but it gives you the capacity to, um. Couple questions on that. One is. If the, if the assessments are gonna go up ten percent or more, then. We're probably gonna get a lot more abatement requests, don't you think? Or there's a potential more exposure for people to question. Uh, their assessments?
We will get many more abatement requests and abatement applications this year because the values will go so high. Typically, when the values go this much higher than usual, though, your tax rate is lower. So your bill may not be as much more as you think it is. But that depends on how high we or how much levy we use.
That's right. No, you're you're a hundred percent correct. Um, just because your values go up doesn't mean your taxes go up.
Right, exactly.
Exactly. Theoretically, if you didn't change the levy number, you're absolutely right. The rate should go down to correspond with that.
Right.
Of course, some. I have been concerned that the levy ceiling, um, is one of the limits under Prop two and a half that protects the residents. Uh, from, you know, potentially big spending, uh, city councils and mayors. Uh, who like to spend lots of money, and, um, they keep jacking up the taxes. And they keep jacking up the taxes. So by having that capacity, it's, it can be problematic because then it's, hey, we've got more money to spend. That, that's something where we need to have self-control over that. Of course, have you done any analysis as to the bubble effect? One of the things that I'm concerned about is there's just bound to be an adjustment. Are you hearing anything at some point that experts are discussing or people that are doing this that, yeah, it's going up, 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 but boy, we've seen years where there's been a big bubble burst. You know, you get the 2008, 2009, 2010, and it goes the other direction. And if your levy exceeds your ceiling, we had that scenario multiple times. What, what do, what do we do then? I mean, how can it keep growing at this pace? And wha- what are experts telling us about that? That we, we should be conservative relative this, to some of this too, don't you think? Because it just assumes it only goes in one direction, it can't hockey stick forever.
That's true. These values will start to come down eventually somehow. There are predictions out there for the future and everybody has different predictions. A lot of people are saying commercial and apartments are going to start plummeting. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, I'm not seeing it yet. There's predictions that the housing market will crash as well. But that hasn't happened yet either, and that was supposed to happen two years ago, and it's still climbing.
Hmm, yeah. And of course, you know, interest rates being high on mortgages and because when you're doing what you're actually, when, said another way, when you're assessing people on their homes now, that's based on sales from a couple of years ago, correct?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Yeah, so we'll have to really watch that so that we get out in front of that, you know?
Right.
If it goes the other way. All right, so you feel the seven fifties enough to cover if people come in for abatements?
I do have some money left in my overlay from last year. And with the seven fifty, I feel that will be enough.
How are we doing in terms of our unused forty-one C for the seniors? Do we still, are we getting better in terms of more people filling out the applications, the poorer seniors to get those? Seven fifty is the word getting, and I know we lowered the age to get the word out, so how, how's that progressing?
Well, the gas and electric flyer, the newsletter they send out, has really helped us significantly. People read that. We get a lot of phone calls based off of that. And we do have more applicants than usual. People have a hard time though, meeting the income requirements. They, they have an income threshold, most people come in over that income threshold. We cannot change that income threshold because we are at the max for it.
Right, right. All right, very good. Thank, thank you, Debbie, really appreciate what you do. Your, your role is gonna become even more and more important to us. We appreciate your long time experience.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, I see Counselor Granny's hand is up.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, madam chair, I just wanted to ask Debbie a question. Generally speaking, the property values are going up because of supply and demand, I would think it's the marketplace. The marketplace is, is such that the scarcity of houses on the market is increasing the value and consequently, that's what's raising the prices, along with the, the interest rates, which is the, the, the increasing interest rates are making the, the, the supply of the homes less and the, the value go up because people can't really afford to get out of their homes and get into a higher mortgage rate, so they're staying where they are. And that's the reason I believe it's supply and demand, nothing more, isn't it?
Well, yes and no. Couple of years ago, when we had a plethora of houses on the market, they were still selling at high prices. Now we have less houses on the market, there's bidding wars, so people are paying more, but the values and the sales are still up there.
Any, anything else?
As I, as I drive through the city, I see fewer and fewer houses for sale.
That is correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, yes indeed, as someone who's been looking for two years, all right. Anyone else? Alrighty, thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, the auditor is next on our agenda, that is page three, please. Hi, Tanya.
Hi.
Is there anything?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
All right. Um, yeah, sure. So for our personal services, we did do a 2% raise for both the Schedule A and also the NAGE employee. So that is five, one, one, oh, one, five, one, one, oh, three, and five, one, one, oh, five. Upon the mayor's request, there was another professional accountant added to my budget, which is five, one, one, oh, six. And you can see that budgeted for $70,000. That's actually a part of the Schedule A, and that's a mid-level salary for that position. Those are my personal services. And also my union accountant position was renamed to assistant accountant, which is five, one, one, two, five. So that's, that's my personal services lines. For my expense lines, I really don't have very much besides the professional accounting and auditing. So, um, broken down, it is, let's see, I have, there's a bunch of different audit items, like the financial audit for the year is $55,000. They do balance sheet, year-end assistance for $20,000. They process our Schedule A in our free cash for $6,000. Quarterly cash reconciliations is 10. We are due for an actuarial valuation this year, so that's $20,000 from our actuary, who also does our, our financial statement disclosures, which they do charge $5,000 for. And the rest stayed pretty much consistent besides office and professional supplies, which were consolidated into procurement.
Thank you, I see Counselor.
Does anybody have any questions?
I see Counselor McGrath first, and then Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. I think my main question to start with is just to hear the reasoning around the idea of adding a new professional accountant tied specifically to the police department and having it here versus under the police department budget. And also just walking us through the rationale for that, that additional position.
Tanya, you want me to jump in or you, you got it?
That would be fine, and, and then if I have anything to add, but I think we both agree why that position would be nice.
A couple reasons. One, you know, it, it, the, the bookkeeper is set to retire. And the book, you know, the, the, it's, it's titled bookkeeper. You know, you have a, a person over there at the police department that's been the, acting as the controls person internally and processing the finances and whatnot. It's scheduled to retire, we have the chief who's been around for a very long time, that's gonna be retiring too. And so we wanted to just kind of make sure that like, as we go forward and find a replacement for the bookkeeper and also introduce this new role that we just not only ensure continuity, but also an opportunity for us to strengthen internal controls, and that's the number two reason in line with my overarching goal here, with trying to improve how we manage resources and finances. So, you know, strengthening internal controls. And I thought it'd be most appropriate to have it under the auditor. So under the supervision and authority of the auditor, to be sure that, you know, again, that checks and balances. I want to make sure that whoever is managing the resources over there that, that, that has that oversight from our auditor and making sure that we're doing things in line with the expectations of Mass General Law and, and financial management policies and procedures, best practice of divisional local services. And I, and I think also we talked about in the audit, there was a, in, in the chief's contract, they call it a, a CAFO, not a CAFO. What's it called? It was a
Controller.
A controller in his contract, controller, professional accountant, along the same lines there. And it was something that was never, well, at least the three years that he's been the chief was, was, was it never funded. But now here is, we're presenting an opportunity to actually do that, and it was a recommendation that came out of that recent audit when we were assessing the, 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 the police department. But Tanya, was there anything else you want to add to that?
I do, and I don't know why I didn't even think of this. I actually had another position in my office in the, it was in a, it was the head administrative clerk. She actually moved up to our building department. And we've been really working on creating more efficient processes in my office. So in my budget as well, that position does not exist. So we have decided not to fill that position. So that's a little bit of a savings there, but I also want to say having an accountant at the police department is gonna help them create more efficient systems, especially around areas like payroll and even with their budgeting, creating requisitions, especially their grants. They get millions and millions of dollars of federal and state grants. They can help with the off-duty account, they can help with collection, they can help with that payroll. And they also have revolving accounts that I think it would be very beneficial to have an accountant in there that is, you know, consistently reconciling those accounts, making sure their payroll, those are things that my office is doing right now. And I think that it would be nice to have them down there to help the grant writers and to help the people that are managing the grants. I think it will free up some time for our patrolmen so that they can do what they do.
Oh, you went on mute for a second, Tanya, I don't know if you meant to do that yet.
I didn't, I didn't, did you hear what I, I just said, like, as far as the police department?
Yeah.
The, you have patrolmen that are doing those jobs right now. And that was one of the recommendations, was that a civilian person come in and manage grants because, you know, we want our patrolmen out, out in our community.
Thank you. I see, oh, cap, sorry, Counselor McGrath Smith, are you all set or do you, did you have a follow-up?
I just have, yeah, I want to follow up with just, so in ordinance, we of course have done the legwork around creating the crime analyst position. And I know that we're gonna get to the police department next, but, and maybe it makes sense to take that question there versus here. But one of my questions is around how are these two positions gonna work together? So if we have this crime analyst and I know the grants, my apologies, hi, this is Isabel. So I'm wondering how that person who's the crime analyst is going to be interacting with a professional accountant and, under the auditor? Because I did, I heard grants, and I might know that all grants is also gonna fall under the crime analyst.
So the key, the key role for the crime analyst counselor is to, you know, we want to use data to drive how we budget for and invest our resources. And, you know, it, it, it really helps trying to understand, again, using data to understand like, you know, what limits, what is it that, you know, we can be doing differently or where we need to focus on to, and how do we divert and plan for when we're putting our budgets together, working with you guys to, to, to help, you know, go after those strategies to improve those data points? And, you know, the financial, the, the accountant is just internal controls. So when, when folks are, you know, doing their payroll and working overtime or taking vacations and whatnot, that there's adherence to the policies and procedures of our financial management and best practices internally, and that it's overseen by the function of the auditing department, which is, which is the, the buck stops there, they're, they're the folks that, that make sure that we don't go outside of what we are not allowed to do per local laws or, or policy.
Thank you. I see Counselor Bacon and then Counselor Rivera.
Thank you. So I'm on the same object code, the five, five, one, zero, six. And a couple of questions. If I'm hearing you correctly, this accounting position would eliminate any officer serving in that accounting grant compliance category that we had had so many questions about over the last, say, eight years? Is that accurate?
Counselor, I don't anticipate the, the auditor writing the grants and going after. A lot of these grants though, when they do come in and it's under our controls within our, you know, our local government controls, have to adhere, you know, as you're aware, have to adhere to the financial management policies and procedures. And so we want to make sure that those controls are there so that we're, and, and, and not only to the policy procedures, but also in line with the contracts that we sign to have these, to have these grants. And the auditor, Tanya does, does a great job doing that as well with any department. But the police department is, is very big. They, there's, they, I think they leverage more grants than any other department. So this is just our, our ability to kind of build up to make sure that those controls and oversight is there so that we're limiting any potential liability to the city.
So then what I'm hearing you say is the same staffing will remain in the police department even with the addition of this accountant? And then, so my follow-up is where will this accountant be physically located? In the auditor's office or the police department?
Right now, I'm, I would say the, at the police department, getting their feet wet and hitting the ground running. But you know, obviously those, as we implement it, right, like that, we have to figure that, those logistical stuffs out, those logistical things out.
But I'm hearing on a day-to-day basis, the line of accountability is going to be with the auditor. And so I'm trying to understand how that day-to-day or week-to-week supervision will work when the person is sitting inside of the police department and everybody else is referring up the chain of command over there.
Yeah, I think Tanya might be able to explain a little better on the oversight part, but I can still say like,
I'll have an office.
So I was just saying that Tanya might be able to describe a little better on what that oversight can look like. But I'm just saying that in general, I'm not saying at all that what's happening over there is, is, is bad, it's just when your authority in a position is the, the department head, we want to make sure that those, that checks and balances systems is separate. So it doesn't put pressure on the auditor to, you know, raise a red flag when we need to raise a red flag. I, I hope I'm explaining it the best I can, but, Tanya.
I'd like to hear what Tanya was starting to say.
Yeah. I, I, I do see the position being at the police department, but also reporting to my office day-to-day because they're gonna be doing the functions of, of the auditor's office. So when you, and I'm not saying, you know, the HPD is, is, you know, not doing a good job either, but they, they lost John Hart, who used to do all of the grants. So although we don't want to write the grants, we do want to know that the grants are coming in, that we're making sure that the expenses are allowable, we're providing reports, we're making sure the reimbursements are going in on time. We're gonna be looking at their payroll systems, we're gonna be looking at their pay codes, who's doing overtime, what kind of system are they? Who's doing overtime, what kind of system are they using, cause they process their own payroll. And it's very hard to have a clear understanding of the union contracts when you don't deal with that every day. And without being there and having conversations with people as they're turning in their sheets or. Even now, we're looking at the re- the reports from um the off-duty. But without having somebody there, there's just so many questions and that does burden the bookkeeper who's doing the data entry. It's a higher level, it's a higher level accounting. Um and it's also checks and balances, so we can do a lot from this office. But we're, we can't do as much as somebody that is there could do. And it would never hurt to have like help processing reimbursements, making sure. That they're coming in for the grants, because that's where sometimes we run into some issues where they're um re- requesting reimbursements. And and maybe the reimbursement isn't accurate, you know, it's not really fair to say to the policeman, oh, every day I want you checking and reconciling. These grants, because I know if I was a policeman, I would not wanna do that. But that's something that this person could definitely do.
So this will be an additional expense in your budget and will there be an offset out of the police department? Or is the police department going to in any way fund this, is or it's gonna just be under you under part of the addition of staff to finance?
So this is in addition to my budget, but also I, we're not, so it's in addition to my budget. It's uh but it is gonna help my office. And I'm also eliminating that head admin- administrative clerk position, because that person has moved. And meanwhile, like, we we're doing it with the just the three of us, so I feel very confident that. If anything, it's gonna make us more productive, cause it's gonna free up some of my time, it's gonna free up. You know, maybe some of these professional services that we're paying for, maybe with more time for me. I can take on, you know, filing the Schedule A, I can take on filing the free cash, but I'm, at this point. I can't go to departments and audit because I don't have time. So hopefully. Yeah, having a higher level accountant is gonna free, hopefully. You know, if it works out the way we like, we'd like it to, will free up some of of my time, so we can do audits. And clear up some of our um audit, you know, issues that we have been having for years.
And will it provide some relief, if any, to the police department and pressures? On their budget at all. I'm trying to see if there's anything. Any financial relief they're gaining by you taking on this role relative to their grants.
I'm ho- I'm hoping it does. I mean, obviously, the police chief is leaving, so I'll be, you know, we'll be working with the. New police chief, that position doesn't exist right now, so I mean, we'll have to build that position together. And decide, you know, what's your expectations, you know, this is what we're looking at, how can we, we want to assist them. Cause we wanna free up their time.
Right.
So it's not only giving controls, but okay, if after you write the grant. And you're running the grant, if we're doing the accounting for you, if we're processing your reimbursements and in. That it should free up some time.
Okay, thank you. Thank, thank you very much for all your work too.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor uh Counselor Rivera.
Thank you, um my questions are around the same line item. Um it's mostly similar to what Counselor um. Bacon was uh kind of alluring to with regards to the grants and um the accountant. I agree with the the accountant coming or working through the auditor's office and still working in the police. Departments where they're able to do the check some balance piece. The piece where I'm kind of perplexed or confused as to. Um what are we charging for administrative costs for every single grant that comes out of the police department?
I want to say that majority don't include administrative costs. It only will cover, it will only cover like supplies, other expenses. I mean, it does cover payroll for certain kinds, like if you look at, um I think it's called the cops grant. They will pay for certain officers, they have a dispatch grant, but administrative. I don't really see that so much, not in any grants any anymore.
So for most grants, when you apply, there's a piece for an administrative cost to be built into it. You have to build it, build it in when you write. Yeah, you gotta write it in the budget when you write the grant. So it to me, I mean, originally, when I had mentioned the grant writer to work out of the mayor's office. It would be for that, right, so that we can manage what we're doing with regards to when we're writing the grants. If everyone wants wants to write their own grants in their own departments, then we can't kind of like. Siphon that or have that clear communication as to, when you write your grants, make sure that you're incorporating a certain percentage for administrative costs. So we can help cover these costs. So like right now, if we have millions of dollars in grants. If there was at least five percent administrative cost for all those millions of dollars. We'd be able to cover this accountant and not after a, it wouldn't hurt the budget or affect the budget. Because it would come out of that administrative cost that would be coming into the system already. So like, to me is how are we trying to build to that? Because. The accountant works, I mean, I I'm in agreement with this, but would this help build to? Build that into the grants moving forward to try to work on mitigating some of these costs, cause that is the idea with the grants. Not necessarily to add more cost to us, it's supposed to mitigate costs to us at the end of the day. So I think that's where my kind of, I'm I'm in agreement with it, like I'm with it, but I'm just. Where, like, are we moving in that direction to kind of help us mitigate these costs, cause grants shouldn't cost us more money? Thank you.
I don't know if anyone.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Counselor, like, some grants allow it, others don't. I'm pretty confident there are some grants over there that that do allow it, among other departments that leverage grant, and it's just another missed. Opportunity that eventually, to your point, we absolutely want to get into, we wanna get there. Um and that's part of just our effort to continue to build up. Um I I remember, you know, our superintendent Soto mentioned that um. You know, as remembering his time from when he was an analyst over in Springfield. Um and what they're doing at the Hoyo Public Schools, it certainly is an op- an opportunity right there to. You know, we need to start getting into the practice, making it a policy, so that as departments apply for these grants, they don't forget, assuming it's eligible. That they build in our overhead costs um, so it's a, it's a good, you're you're on point.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera, was there, your hand still up? You good?
No, 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 it should, it should go down, my bad.
No, no, it's okay. Just wanted to make sure. Um Counselor Jordan?
Uh yes, I um, Tanya. And to the mayor, I'm very strongly supportive of making sure we have a a sufficient number of accountants. If we are gonna have one, is there really need for a position a hundred percent dedicated to the police? Only in this role, s- and let me continue with the question. If we're replacing the bookkeeper position, which it sounded like that's where we were going, cause this person's gonna be retiring. One, I still see the bookkeeper fully funded in the police budget, so the question is, when is the bookkeeper retiring? And I like the idea of this position should be a direct report of the auditor. This position, their bookkeeper should not be in the police. The whole reason you have separation of duties is. You don't want the person who's reviewing the paperwork, reporting to the same department that they're supposed to be monitoring. Okay, so this should be in the auditor's office, I like that, and I hope this person will be a direct report of Tanya's. They can work with the police, you know, do all that. But this person needs to be carefully independent of the police, to give full independent review and not inside their chain of command. That's very concerning to me. So can you kind of go over that one more time as to? We're not gonna have both jobs and the reporting relationship?
Tanya, did you wanna jump in or?
Neither one of us, Tanya, just didn't wanna interrupt you. So when the mayor and I discussed it. We said the same thing is that, you know, you don't want somebody entering in the information and then also being the one responsible. And checking it and moving it forward. And there's only so much that we can catch in our office, and I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong, but it's a lot of tedious accounting and paperwork. So it's, I'm glad, I would be glad to have them here because we do do a lot of work with the police department right now. And I can't say about the bookkeeper and I don't know, you know, I can't say, I'm not privy to that information. But I do know that that particular person has a ton of um information and experience. So it would be nice if, and I do believe she is retiring, if we could get an accountant in there. So that there's, you know, there's no issue when she does leave, somebody will know. The system for their payroll and, you know, how they're accounting for their overtime and their timesheets. And all of the different ins and outs that we don't know today in the auditor's office, I feel like it will. It'll allow for the processes to become the same as other departments, like for. For example, the treasurer's office, it it will help uh make constant policies. In that way, you know, one department's not doing one thing for payroll and another one's having another thing. And we also wanna go down into the DPW and we wanna look at their process and so. It would be the beginning of freeing up time to help us to go. And look in at it, the other departments and see what they're doing, time that we don't have now. As far as the other position, that's a more of a mayor question, I feel.
Yep, so thank you, Tanya. I, we, the short answer is, we don't know yet until we go in and see what the. How much time is needed if. I um, no retirement hasn't been announced, but you know, I hear a lot that it's coming and, you know, she's, I think she's one of our longest, if not the longest. Uh working employee in the city, and there's a lot of institutional knowledge that was built up over time, that's that's stepping out, and so we wanna. Be ready for that um and, you know, that person, when they're in there doing their thing, working together with Tanya. We're gonna learn more or less the magnitude of the work that needs to be done, and if the bookkeeper is a role that's critical. To to do those entries, um we'll evaluate at that time and and support it if if we learn that. Hey, look, you know, we got a good handle this and and we don't need it, you know, we can talk about it at that time, so I can't say. For sure if if uh that role is um something that it will be in fact eliminated until we um. Understand what's going on over there better.
Are you supportive of taking that position out of the police department? Um and having a reporting relationship? I I just am very, very concerned. And I continue to be concerned about these silos that. Different departments get special treatment, get to do whatever they want, don't have to follow the same standard personnel policies. Get their own person for this and it's under there, it's how we sort of have a um. A confederacy of government that should not be allowed. Um and, well, you get your own bookkeeper, so that means we get to just sort of have our own little way of doing things over here. Versus, no, we have an auditing department and an accounting department, and all departments are gonna follow the same. General policies and systems under one independent reporting relationship, like. It's the, you know, I I hear things that, you know, I I've heard concerns relative to about how overtime is. Put into payroll at the police department, um that it's not put not always necessarily in the pay, in the pay week that it's worked. But other departments are not allowed to get away with that, that they have to put it in the weeks that it's worked. So why do we have a separate set of rules and why do certain departments get their own bookkeeper? And get to do things their own way versus one centralized accounting and system of of financial management? Why do we feel that's a good way to run government?
Yeah, that is not a good way to run government. Um departments don't have their own s- set of separate rules and. Um silos, I get, I'm proud to announce have gotten dramatically better. Um departments were creating a much more a a central business administration and departments have been. Very supportive of that movement and transition, including the police department, there's still more. Things that we're working on, including what we're talking about here, and when I think of this role as the bookkeeper and. I don't know, maybe the title is wrong, it's 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 an admin assistant that's doing entries um, you know, Milk and Steve do. Um do that in my office and and other departments, you got the library who um has a. Quote-unquote financial manager, right, like, they all have these little different titles, but it's really. That bookkeeping admin role to just, you know, it's it's not, it's not at all how it described it to be and. Uh some of the practices, you know, the whole thing you talked about with overtime, has that been? A lot of that has changed and transitioned, we've moved away um from that, I think. You know, Tanya, together, um as well as the treasurer, you know, we're very clear on on uh. It was part of many changes that we've been able to implement across the board, getting away from these practices that. Were happening, to your point, Counselor, and so um it's getting a whole lot better. Um departments have extremely supportive, so has the pu- uh the chief at the department. Um so and whether or not um overtime or or grants have been. Mismanaged, like, I can't confirm that for sure, cause nothing formally has came forward. Uh we haven't found anything um of such, um so it's tough to say, but I know that. Uh years of institutional knowledge that have learned how to do these things over time is leaving. And, you know, I I get a little worried and I'm sure our auditor does too, like, oh god, like, is the next person gonna be able to? And so he- here, this is our effort to try to close that gap a little bit and strengthen so that. So that we're not, you know, creating a situation that's gonna blow up in our in our faces later.
Mayor, as you know, one of the concerns some of us have had is the cost of having grant administration done by a superior officer. Extremely expensive, I think something in the order of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year Mr. Hart was making. Well, you know, I I like John, um I don't think we need to be paying a grant administrator a quarter of a million dollars a year. And so the question is, um now that he's apparently not doing it, what have we done now to transition? Grant administration to a civilian position, since we're gonna be doing the, this accountant and. How how is that being handled now?
I can add it in the budget if, if you want me to, I can. Put another line in the police department for civilian grant manager position. I was just, you know, every year, I, you know. In my first year coming in, I I got to learn really quickly what all the needs were, but I can only move as quick as. We're able to in one year, every year when we do our budget, so I tried, I tried my best not to bite more than what I could chew. Um and so here we're talking about two essential functions, um this accounting position. And the crime analyst position that people have been talking about for a long time, and then hopefully next year we can do something, you know, I said, I'm trying not to. Bite too much from the apple, um uh but.
Well, civilian grant administrator is definitely way more important than crime analyst. That's, and I'm an advocate of crime analyst, okay? Um for for example, the argument was made, well, we already have an officer here doing it, and he has all this experience, so let's keep paying the two hundred and fifty. Here.
I I don't mind, put it in the budget, I I it's a great idea, I don't.
So we need to do that because my fear is that it becomes barnacles on the boat. If it now, if those duties transition to an officer, then we're gonna be told we have to wait till that officer retires ten years from now. Before it gets fixed, now that the person who was doing it has retired, now is the time to do that transition and. You know, that's, we need cops on the street, not sitting in an office working on grants. That should be done by a civilian duty, okay? We don't need a a lieutenant for two hundred and fifty thousand doing grants. So yes, cut out crime analysts. cut out crime analyst if we're, if we're tight on budget and let's put in the civilian grant administrator would be my recommendation.
I don't wanna necessarily comment on a sergeant making two hundred and fifty. I think there's way more to that than, than what's beating the eye, but to the civilian idea, you're not absolutely
Contracts that we haven't fixed. Um, nobody should be making that kind of money.
If, if we were to break down what an officer is making that is hitting those dollars amounts, it, it it starts to make a little more sense, but that's a symptom of a problem to your, to your point, like how do we, how do we, how do we eliminate those symptom, tho- those issues so that we're not creating a situation where any officer has to make that much money? Um, and it's more than just, just overtime and grants. There are other detail works and things that that people do that get to that dollar amount, which is another conversation. But um civilianizing the position, I, I'm, I'm I'm just, I'd be happy to add that in the budget during supplemental. If I'm allowed to use that word, um, it's not, you know, anything I'm against.
Well, and I wanna get into all my police questions, cause I've got a lot on those relative to items that are wildly underfunded in the police budget. And I'm concerned about it because your budget is already at the levy ceiling. And I see just on the back of my hand, there's another million dollars needed in the police department budget based on past run rate and, and you don't have that. So we'll, we'll get to that when we get to, to, to page uh eighteen. But staying with the auditor department, free cash. Um, Tanya, where are we at with the free cash? Um, in terms of, we're talking about adding auditors and, and having our audits done and completed. Are we anywhere near the free cash? And what year's free cash would that be?
That would be fiscal year twenty twenty-three's free cash. And we are in the middle of our audit right now. And I would hope as long as all of the departments hand in the information that the auditor has requested, we should see it in like two, three weeks. But also we have to do our part.
How are we on cash reconciliation, Tanya?
Um, I know they are still reconciling. I don't know if the treasurer is still on and wants to speak on that. I don't, I don't know if he's here right now. Um, as far as the reconciliation, they are definitely still giving us reconciling items. I can say that.
Is it for FY twenty-three? Or twenty-two?
Yes. Twenty-three.
Okay. Um. All right. So that part of like, by completing that, that will help us to get the free cash for twenty-three?
I can't hear you for some reason.
I'm sorry. If we complete the cash for twenty-three, we're gonna need to get that done in order to get the free cash for twenty-three, correct? The, the cash reconciliation or that can be done later?
Absolutely. Because you need the cash reconciliation to see what your free cash actually is. And you don't wanna, you don't wanna certify your free cash and not reconcile because your cash needs to be on point.
Anything else, folks?
I guess, um, yeah, no problem. I did wanna just mention, um, you know, the issues around the off-duty account. I agree that, is that gonna be the role of this new accountant position? To, to make sure that that
Absolutely. Sharon from my office actually works with Off Duty Blue right now. And I can tell you that they give us weekly reports based on their payroll, based on the fees with the breakdown, so.
It's gotten a lot better.
Were working with them previously and I felt comfortable. It, this company itself is better. And they had switched in the middle, so I'm not sure what really happened there. But we're, we're back, we're getting the weekly reports and that is something that uh my accountant does right now. She reconciles reports.
If we still have the bookkeeper, do we need an exclusive additional accountant just for the police department or can this added accountant cover other departments? Like the fire department, for example?
It's hard for me to say without, yeah, it's hard for me to say because without going into the police department and knowing what their needs are um, and, and you know, what is gonna happen with the bookkeeper position? You might go in there, you might put an accountant in there, or they streamline some systems. We just, we just upgraded our financial, um, our financial modules in, in Munis or Tyler ERP, which is gonna actually in the long run will streamline a lot of processes. So some of the things that that bookkeeper is doing right now, they're, they're gonna be non-existent because it's gonna be more efficient and it's gonna be all, um, it's gonna be all computerized. So without knowing everything that's going on, I can't say that. But I mean, my hope is that, you know, everything is streamlined, everything is not paper, it is computerized and that's gonna hopefully free up a lot of time for a lot of administrative work.
How do you allocate the departments, Tanya? Do you have X accountant, you've got the building department and the DPW and this one you have fire and you have police or do you apportion people by departments?
I actually only have one accountant. I have the union accountant that does like all of the cash receipts and uh, the different accounts payables and accounts receivables. Then I have Sharon, who's a higher, or the professional accountant who oversees that, that position, you know, and I do as well. But we all work with every department, so that way we're all cross-trained. We can all do each other's work. We know about all the different departments, so there's, it's not, it's not like that. We do everything for everybody, all of us.
So what? If you're managing it now with this number of people, and I'm generally warm towards more accountability, if this is what we're gonna get out of this position, but if you're getting a higher level person than the bookkeeper, which by the way, the pay of the bookkeeper despite her supposedly more minimal level or lower level task than the middle is, is still a sixty-eight thousand dollar job. Um.
Yeah.
My, I guess my question is like, what? What do, what's the real like added on that this person's going to do? If that it would be just only the police? We've mentioned the, the off-duty account. And I'm just trying to understand how one department, when you guys do this cross-training as you're running it now, that we need a full accountant just for one department?
In the end, we might find out it may not be a whole position, but they would be doing all the payroll. They would be helping with the payroll, overseeing the payroll. So that's quite a feat in itself. Because that's seven hours a day, twenty-four hours. Seven, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. I'm getting tired now. Um, so that would be uh off-duty, ten million dollars in grants, monitoring the budget with the chief, watching the overtime, um, the overtime time sheets. So I mean, until you actually get in there, my guess is they probably could use all of that help, especially, and I don't, like I said, I don't know what the retirement date is, but I know, I know that I if she's not there and they don't hire somebody right away, somebody's gonna have to go do that payroll. And right now it would probably be me. And also the grants, I'd like help the, and, and they do a good job. I'm not gonna say they do a bad, you know, they do a good job at, at what they can do as far as reconciling their grants, but that's a lot of money even for one person.
Should we, should that bookkeeper job be in your department? At the, instead of, uh, under the police budget?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
I would say there's also like somebody doing payroll down at the fire department. So they don't necessarily, wouldn't need to be in my department, but payroll belongs in the treasurer's office. Payroll is processed by the treasurer's office and then it comes to my office and we audit it. We're auditors and accountants. So if not in my office
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, they
But my point is earlier, I asked a question regarding payroll. Didn't, I asked a question regarding payroll and he was told there's two payroll clerks in the treasurer's office for a hundred and ten thousand. But actually, there's people doing all these other payroll positions in all these other departments, so it's actually more than a hundred and ten thousand, isn't it?
A piece of it, yep. They do, they do fire, DPW and the police department do process their own payroll. And we audit it.
Right. So my question is, again, I make the allegation that certain departments do what they do and they're a confederacy instead of having centralized payroll, centralized personnel, centralized lord knows what else, that certain departments are fithums and they're allowed to do what they wanna do and have their own little realms. And what I'm suggesting is, we need to start acting as one city with centralized personnel, centralized HR, uh, accounting and, and centralized payroll and there's no company that I'm aware of that says, oh, you're in this department, you do your own and this one over here, you do your own. This is how we, and then this, are you doing it? Is the police doing it the same as the fire? Who's doing it the same as the DPW? Who's doing it? You know, we gotta get with the twenty-first century here.
Yes, we do.
Close, this is, this is making my point, but the more we
Yes.
get into this, we're, we're, we're peeling, as I ask more questions, I get more answers. See, I'm really learning now. I asked the payroll question and it isn't all the payroll. There's payroll in fire, there's payroll in police. Well, now we're getting to it, right? But
Sort of. It's a lot complex than that, counselor, but we're mov- the grand point you're making though, we're moving in that direction and every reason why we're introducing this position and talking about this, and there's gonna be more changes to come. And when the bookkeeper does decide to retire, it's gonna be a wonderful opportunity to have that conversation about what we wanna do. So it, you're not you're hitting the nail, you're hitting the nail on the head. You're not saying anything we didn't already discovered or talked
No, I agree. You all know this stuff, but why are we moving at such glacial pace? Why can't we just change it? We're, you're in charge. Move the bookkeeper into, uh, into the auditor's office, move payroll under the treasurer. Let's just do it. Why do we have to keep year after year talking about it?
Cause in, in, in local govern, and, and you guys know this, right? Like there's opportune moments when it's a lot easier to do those changes versus just coming from the top down and saying, all right, we're gonna move, like you have someone that's been in that role for a very long time that's used to a certain way and doing it a certain way. And we try not to rock that boat too much. We'll, we'll work with it and we have been. Um, that person's gonna retire soon. Um, so that's where your opportunity comes in. Chief's retiring soon and we're gonna be getting ready for a, a, you know, a, a new incoming chief for the near future, another opportunity presenting itself right now to do things um a little differently. So I, I, you know, we're, we're with you. It's just government is is slow. It's, it's, it's to be effective, we gotta, we gotta, go ahead.
Uh, no, I'm actually Okay, thank you. I'm just looking at the time. We're three hours in. We still have the whole police department budget to work on and these are great conversations, but I'm hoping we can sort of stick to uh, the things that are in front of us going forward because I know that this next department could be a lengthy discussion. Um, so thank you everyone for all your questions. I'm not seeing any other questions uh related to the auditor's budget. I do see the chief's hand is up and I know chief, you are gonna have the opportunity to go through your budget as well. Is, were you responding to um a prior question? I, I apologize, I missed your hand before.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify some things because a lot of things are being said that just aren't factual. Um, we have been planning about the payroll clerk or the uh payroll person leaving for a while and I have a backup person. We always have. We've just had to train a new backup person. So when that payroll clerk leaves, we will be able to make payroll. I won't need Tanya to come over here and do it for me. So we've been kinda planning for that. Um. I just was gonna also say that I know this is all gonna come up in my, I mean, we're talking a lot about the police and we're not even on the police budget, so I'm ready. Three hours.
Yeah, that was a good warm-up. All right. Thank you, chief. Um, so uh, moving forward, uh, the police department budget is on page eighteen. And I'm not gonna limit questions that everyone asks, but I just ask you to uh, you know, try to um let others, let everyone get a chance to ask questions. Thank you so much. Chief, would you like to uh, outline anything in particular before we go into questions?
Uh, you know, I was just gonna touch on the fact and I, I know it's already been touched on about the crime analyst is the big uh addition to the budget. Um, so I'm, I'm ready for questions.
All right. Ooh, I'd like, uh, Counselor Rivera, I see your hand first. Dive right in.
I was gonna say, I don't have many, so I could go last, but if, if, if I, you want me to go first, it's fine. I think for me, I one is around the number, hold on. Can you guys, can you scroll down a little bit? Cause I want my phone. Um, it's around the uh education Quinn bill. Um, I saw that there were, that's the line five one nine two zero. And I thought that you guys made a decrease there from what it was before, almost about two hundred thousand. But I also saw that there's been a variety of different transfers coming out of that particular line item over the last few months. So for me, if there is any space to cut there, please let us know, right? That's one thing. And then the other piece is on the police officers, if you go back up. Um, I see patrol officers a little bit to the right. Uh, so patrol officers was at ninety-eight last time and now at ninety-five. If I'm correct.
That's five one one zero seven, is that right?
Yes, 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 yes. Five one one zero seven, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead. You can just, just, those are my two questions.
I can answer that. The, uh, trauma's line item, the number you're looking at ninety-eight was what I proposed for the mayor this year, just trying to stick with what the audit had told us to do. But then in later conversations with the mayor and the budget constraints and, and other factors, the mayor uh put that back to ninety-five where we are currently at. So that's the same as last year's uh budget. Um, the only would be the, you know, contractual raises that make it go up. So that ninety-eight that you're looking at was my proposal to the mayor. And I thought I was doing that to stay in um step with the audit, how the audit had told us to try to increase by three each year to get up to a, a, a better level, staffing level. But in conversations with the mayor discussing the, his constraints on the budget and everything else, it's just not feasible this year to, to, to keep on that track at this current time. So the mayor moved it back to ninety-five and put the uh dollar amount equivalent to that. As far as the, as far as the Quinn bill, do you have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, um, the, the Quinn bill is just I know that we're kind of fully funding it now as, as a community uh versus it's kind of being shared funding with the state. Um, I don't wanna like un-grandfather anybody that's already grandfathered, but it would be good to understand though, like when the grandfathering will end. Because there, there probably is an end date, right? Um, and then that's just that. And then one other thing came up too, I, I see the parade weekend overtime's five one three two zero and five one three two one. What are the difference in those two lot, like, what's the difference between? I know parade weekend is parade weekend, but like, why isn't that a special event? Like?
Well, that was, that was set up uh years ago to separate out exactly what we were Well, that was, that was set up, uh, years ago to separate out exactly what we were spending. Solely on parade and road race.
Okay, okay.
And then special events are a lot of the other events.
Yep, yep, I got you. Alright, that, that was.
Quinn bill and it looks like we've already taken into account the, the anticipated or the cuts. So it's kinda like you're a year behind the people that did retire from last year's money has now been subtracted. And, and then, you know, it's already been factored in and. There's already, as you said, a two hundred thousand dollar cut, so it went down two hundred thousand dollars going into this fiscal year, so. Um, I can't, I can't, I don't have the number on the top of my head of how many officers still are under the Quinn bill. Um, but they are retiring each year, so eventually that will be zero out.
Alright, and then I, I was gonna ask you if you could just give me that, but I, I'll, I'll ask you that on the side and see. Maybe share all that with the, with the council later on.
Uh, counselor Bacon?
Thank you and, uh, thanks for your patience tonight, chief. Um, my question is on line five, one, one, two, four, the grant manager. And I'm wondering, without this position filled in your budget, who will be doing that oversight? Part of the grants in your department?
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. So, yeah, we, we were trying for a grant manager, um, for a while, but. That's another thing that kinda was being talked about. So the grant manager is a sergeant in the department. We've already transitioned from Sergeant Hart to Sergeant Zerhai. Um, I know he's been at some finance meetings and stuff. Um, but that's, again. It, it's, it's not accurate when, you know, I don't, I don't know what Sergeant Hart made per se. But it wasn't all just doing grants. There were, there's overtime shifts and there's outside work that's done, um, and. This grant manager specifically is also, uh, assigned to helping the. Detective Bureau as an extra supervisor. He does on-call stuff for that as well. So it's not just all grant managing, it's. He, he is my grant manager at this point because I needed to do something when Sergeant Hart went out, uh, he went out with an accident and. You know, suddenly and we had to, uh, adjust rather quickly. Um, I think we were sort of in a mode there as well, where we knew Sergeant Hart was. Before he had the accident, was, you know, getting closer to retirement. And so we were already, again, transitioning someone to at least be able to keep us afloat until we got to our next. Person, so, uh, Sergeant Zerhai's been doing it now for over a year and he's.
Oh, okay. I'm just catching up. Alright, um, so about how much of his job would you say is the grants? Like half?
I'd say somewhere between half and seventy-five percent. I would say probably closer. He, he's been doing quite a bit, especially this year because he's been learning. So he's had to put a little more time in, um, as he gets, you know, obviously more comfortable with the grants. That allows him to kinda. Do more on the other side.
And so from your point of view, I know we've had, been going back and forth talking about. A civilian versus a police officer doing it and sort of from a logical point of view. There is the argument made that it isn't the, maybe the best use of a high-level officer. Position, but on the other hand, is there an argument to be made that there is, um. A high-level knowledge needed relative to the grants? I'm, I'm just wondering.
Uh, I, in my opinion, yes, and I would always. It's why I have it set up the way I do. If we do decide to go to civilian grant manager, um, that's great. But I would still want Sergeant Zerhai to be involved because that grant, we have no. I guess the argument I would make is that we could hire a grant manager, but that person come in here for a year and quit. And go somewhere else and then we're back to square one. I need somebody that can always be ready to kinda, you know. Keep those grants working and I, I guess I just, you know, I have a lot more tenure with a officer. I think that using a sergeant makes a lot of sense because, um, they are a supervisor. They're the lowest, uh, you know, if it's, if it's money we're talking about, they are the lowest paid of all the supervisors. So, um, but I do think it, you know, a supervisor is, is important to have in there, um. Cause there is a lot of oversight of the grants and what they're doing. So, you know, in a perfect world, if we did get to a grant manager position someday. I would, I would see a scenario where that grant manager could come in, do more of the grants. And Sergeant Zerhai could also, you know, do more on the other side and yet still be. Have the understanding of what's going on with the grants. In case that person decides, cause there's not, nothing to hold that civilian grant person here, right? If someone comes along and offers the grant manager more money, they might leave. There's no, there's nothing holding them here. And so I, I just think I need that person. I think it's also important and I think most grant managers would even tell you. That if they're gonna write police grants for the police department, you need some of that institutional police knowledge. To write the grants that are gonna fit into the police world, so. That's, that's why I've have it set up the way I do and for now Sergeant Zerhai's doing a, a great job picking up the ball from Sergeant Hart. And moving forward. And if we get to a civilian, then my plan would be to. Bring that civilian in, work with, you know, in, in conjunction with Sergeant Zerhai for a while and when they get comfortable. And if we're very lucky and that grant manager hangs around, that will allow Sergeant Zerhai to do more and more, but I would always want Sergeant Zerhai to have a. An understanding of the grants just for that. Purpose. We always try to have somebody to back up everybody and I think it makes sense.
Right, well, um, thank you for your perspective on this and can you just remind us roughly? Um, how many dollars worth of grants? Cause I know a lot of them are recurring year to year. And it, it's a lot of money. Can you remind us just generally what the totality of the grants is?
I, I, I couldn't even put, I, I know it's in the millions, but you know, when I say that, mo- most of the grants. Are, are partner grants, like we don't get the whole amount of money. Lot of the grants are, are divvied up between us and all our partners and the police department is just a portion of that. And then, you know, so, you know, it can be a million dollar grant, but the police department might only get a hundred thousand dollars of that grant.
Right.
But it's working with your partners and, and, you know, managing those grants, it's a struggle.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor, um, counselor Rivera.
Just on that, uh, grants point, um, I, I would argue that the civilian, if they came in, right? The expectation would be to work alongside the police department, that they can have the understanding. Um, I, I know in my past, uh, professional, uh, career, working. For the Holy State Neighborhood Initiative, um, the, uh, the Holy, no, no, the Holy State Successful Youth Initiative. Which was a grant program that came out of the police department. I think it was my executive director at the time that worked with. Mister Hart to write the grant. So like, it's not something that's not a practice that's already being practiced in the police department. It's something that's, that's kind of already a practice. Um, I think that it would, it would, it would help. Instead of having Mister, uh, Zerhai doing seventy-five percent to eighty percent of that kind of work. Maybe bringing it down to twenty-five to thirty percent and allowing him to do more of his police work, um, in the role that. Kinda like what kind of applied to do in the, in the first place. Um, I, I, I do agree with the, whoever it is. They should have an understanding of criminal justice, um, and the way things function within that realm. Um, I just would, would also add that most grant writers are consulted, like most grant writers. Are not actually working for the organization. They get a consultant fee and they get brought in. Uh, so that's why it, it's kinda hard to find the grant writer and if you have one, um, they hold on to them and. Most people collaborate within that process. Um, I know the city of Holy does that on many different grants that are being partnered throughout the city. Um, so it's not nothing that's uncommon to have someone that is not necessarily under your department writing the grant for you. They work with you, you know, alongside you, but I, I, I totally hear your point on, on making sure that Mister Zerhai is still involved. Some way, shape or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, counselor Jordan?
Okay, anybody else, Madam President, before I go or?
No, just.
Alright, great, thank you. Chief, uh, as you know, in a number of past years. We would have a number of your line items that would be underfunded, uh, generally intentionally with the basis that. You would come back to us for more additional money to justify those funds such as overtime. The difference with this year's budget however, with no money, um. Let me back up and say three hundred thousand in overtime. That's at least seven hundred thousand less than your run rate. We're already at the levy ceiling according to the budget that's presented to the city council. There is only. Nineteen thousand. Nine, about nineteen thousand dollars left in levy capacity based on the mayor's proposed budget to us. How do you plan to get the other seven hundred thousand dollars to fund your overtime?
Uh, as, as the same way I do every year. I don't usually come back to you for more money. I just come back and move money that's already in my budget. So i- it's probably gonna be similar this year. We do have grants, um, uh, that. Offset some of our salary line items and that's usually where I, I get it from and, and move it over.
So you're saying that based on what we're presented here, we have sufficient money to fund all these line items?
It's hard to look at it now and say that, but that's, that's how we do it, um, you know, that. We'll, we'll have to make that work, yes.
Well, there's no more money left, so you're, you're gonna have to, right? So for example, you requested on Quinn bill. Six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. The mayor funded it at a level five hundred thousand. Why did you put and make a request for six hundred and sixty-seven thousand? If the mayor only funded it at a half a million, wh- why did you request the other hundred and sixty-seven thousand?
Those, this, my number is the number I had here of known, like. Which was down from last year, that I could, you know, let's just say conservatively say. That I could s- cut that, um, the mayor, I don't know. Working with Tanya or looking at future retirements, decided to take more. I guess you could ask him.
So you, you have, um, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand elsewhere that you can transfer during the year into this line?
If I have to, yes.
Without jeopardizing the safety of the public?
Well, I, I will do what I can with what I have. That's all I can do.
Okay. Question on cars. Approximately, we need to purchase how many cars per year on average in order to make sure we have a healthy vehicle fleet?
So the plan is, we have it now is three, rather than six every two years, we're gonna try to do three every year now. To keep that rotation in. We've been, we have been purchasing the cars with the, uh, extended warranties now. And so, um, the, the mindset now is that if rather than what we were doing. Um, buying three and getting three onto the line sooner and three of the ones that are still under warranty. Say off the line is more of a backup car and then three more coming in the following year. And, and the thought in there is the more, I guess the quicker we can rotate some of the cars off the line. Then the longer those, you know, warranties will hold out for us.
Where in the budget is the three cars that you're proposing?
It's, it's, it's cut there, cause we're, we're gonna treat that as a capital.
Capital.
Um, you know, and hopefully one day there's a, that we get to a point where we can raise and appropriate a capital line item through taxation. We're just not there yet, so we depend on certification of free cash to, um, uh, be our. Our, our capital need. Not a best practice, but it's one that helps get us through a balanced budget.
Okay, so you're gonna take it out of the upcoming free cash?
Absolutely, assuming the council supports it.
Our, our past is, you wanna make sure you have the cars you need.
Yeah.
Chief, there's been, uh, different schools of thought about four captains versus three captains. Can you give us? How many captains do you have today and why we should have three versus four or four versus three, whatever your opinion?
Okay, so I would, I would hit that on two fronts. We have, we currently have four. Um, we have restructured the department. We have a captain on each shift and then we have a captain in charge of. Um, basically admin in the, in the, in the bureaus. Um. I would say that. It's, it's structured that way. We're increasing capacity of patrolmen. And I, I think that going down in supervision is not wise. And I think, quite honestly, with my, um, departure, um, we're gonna be. You know, one of the captains is gonna become the interim chief. All our captains are, um. Fairly new and, um, I would highly recommend for the interim chief to have a full complement of captains. I, I just think it's, it's wise for liability reasons and, um. For the structure that we have in place currently. We find that it's, it's been working well having a captain on each shift.
We have four permanent ones, correct now?
Currently, right now, yes.
Oh, what, what, I understand someone's retiring at the end of the, of June, I believe?
Correct, uh, Ju- early July.
Early July, okay. Chief, in order to make up these transfers, uh, we know at least seven hundred thousand you're gonna need for overtime. What's it most likely that those lines are gonna come from? Is it gonna be the? Dispatchers that we overfund and we plan on getting the grant, uh, but what we, we funded and then we backfill the money? Um, and how many patrolmen do we actually have even though we're budgeting for ninety-five?
We're budgeting for ninety-five, um, we currently have, uh. Ninety at this moment, but, uh, of those ninety, seven of them are in the police academy right now. Just started this past Monday, so. Um, we're actually operating around eighty-three.
So my question is if we actually, if the public actually got ninety-five officers. Which is what I'm voting for, if I vote for ninety-five, which is what I would like to have, right? Cause I'm.
Correct.
Where's the money gonna come to transfer money out of these lines? Wh- where, where's the, where's the transfers gonna come?
The monies would probably come from the patrolman's line item, possibly the sergeant's line item. Um, some of that is from grants as well, which pay some of our, our, our officer salaries. Uh, you're correct, I'm, well, you're partially correct about the, uh, dispatcher. We don't overfund it. We fund it. For the, for the dispatches we have and then it's a reimbursable grant that we then can apply. You're right, we can. Apply that to the line item and then, and move that to overtime later, but. We, we, we have to fund it in order to apply for that grant.
So is the thinking that? If, how, how would we have patrolmen? You have all your sergeant positions filled?
Currently, yes.
We fill all the, if we keep having all of our sergeants and we keep fill, and we fill our ninety-five patrolmen. How do we have the money to transfer?
Well.
Because we're gonna have grants.
There's a, there's a lapse, Kevin, when you have, um, let's, let's just say there's even a sergeant's opening. Um, if a sergeant was to say to retire, well, then there's, you know, gonna be a promotion that sometimes takes time. So pay periods can go by and, and then you're not paying that money out of the line item. With the patrolman, it's the same thing. I mean, we hire patrolmen. And we plan on, we, we actually just, I can give you a great example. We thought we were sending eight to the police academy and one of them got hurt in the very first week and he's since. Um, resigned, so he's no longer with us, so that patrolman's. You know, salary will start to accumulate in the, in the, in the budget, even though I had that budgeted for. For this year. Now, there's an academy coming up in July and there's more in the, the next one after that is December. So we will figure that out and, and it's a process. It's not as easy as just saying, well, let's get people and send them to the academy. That process takes through civil service quite some time to establish those lists. Get those people, get them vetted, get them physicals, psychologicals, everything else that needs to be done. In order to go into the academy. Um, but we don't hire those people until they're just about to go to the academy. And so then when they're getting ready to go, then we'll hire them, so, um, you know, between the. That's where the money will come from. It's, it's where it comes from every year. It's the same as it is every year. Um, until we can get our capacity up. Now, if we get our capacity up, which is what the audit suggested, then your overtime number will come down. But it's a process to get us there. We've been slowly climbing and getting closer, but, um. You know, it, it's not, as the mayor mentioned on other things, doesn't just happen overnight. It takes time.
Mm-hmm, of course, you and I both know that. We have these same discussions year after year after year and every year. We keep saying we're gonna get to a full complement. It's, I don't think it's anybody's necessarily fault. I don't know if we have to hire. Extra to get to the number we need and we have like, uh. Whatever, but we never ever do actually get to the full complement. I don't know if there's a, an answer to that conundrum.
Can you explain to the counselor?
Well, no, it's mayor, real quick, I just want to clarify, when we started, when I started, chief, we were gonna get to a number of ninety. And we have increased up, so it, you're always gonna operate probably four or five. Officers below the number that you budget, just based on retirements and the time it takes to get people into the academy. Now, that might not be for the full year, but it could be for three or four months. It could be as much as six months. Until you can actually get them into working, so we have built capacity. If we hadn't done what we've done, we'd probably be operating down in the seventies right now. So I think that, that we have increased it and it, and it, and it will continue to increase as long as we keep doing what we've been doing.
Chief, I was just gonna say, can you explain the, the counselor choose some of the strategies that we, we've been kind of talking about? To get creative, to get as close to that number, because you, you know. With the number of employees being a much higher number, you know what I mean, and your surpluses that grow into, and cast in the net and. This little, it's the shell game we always, we always gotta play to get as close as we can to it.
Right, I mean, if we could have that number of officers. So I'm, I'm limited to that ninety-five. That's as high as I can go. I can't, I can't hire positions I don't have. If that number was higher, but say the, uh, the number, the actual dollar amount wasn't. Like if, if, if that was ninety-eight, but the dollar amount was cut to ninety-five. I could still shoot for ninety-eight, I, knowing I'd never get there, but I, I would have the money to at least get to ninety-five. Um, I don't know how you do that, you know, in. Properly, and I'm probably not saying it properly, the right way to budget it. But that's sort of the, I, I hear what you're saying too. It's kind of like you want to have a number or a way to shoot higher than what we actually have. I, I mean, there is some, we had talked one time about a, a, another line item, right, that would be. Debt officers or something like that, or, or so that you could, you could budget into that line item as a surplus. I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm pretty sure we're not gonna get there before July thirty-first, so I, it's probably not gonna be me that's gonna solve this problem, but I'm trying. To build capacity, because that's what the audit told us to do, and I know that's what this department needs.
Right, right, maybe we could get. Do that and then those are the dollars as the numbers dwindle down below ninety-eight. Those be the first dollars, then we could transfer that into overtime, you know what I'm saying, but at least you have the. The legal authority to have a few extra positions, even though they'll never be really filled because of the, the back and forth. Um, keeping, keeping this moving, um, on your expenses, a lot of it was status quo. But, um, I did want to ask you about, uh, data management. Uh, you had requested about two sixty-nine and the mayor funded it at two hundred. I know this past, uh, year we were over two hundred. Where does that stand in terms of your estimates on that? Like you must have had a logic behind two sixty-nine, right?
Absolutely, that, the main, uh, thrust there was the new, uh, record management system. Which in, in totality added probably a hundred thousand to that, uh, line item. So I knew that it was gonna bump up by that, um, and. These, you know, it's just basically everything also has gone up, like all these. Um, you know, service contracts and all the things that we need to run the police department and all the computer systems and everything we have here. Um, all the technology, all that technology comes with, you know, service contracts to run them, so, um. That's, that's where I came up with the number. I, I don't know. You know, I, I don't want to speak for the mayor, but I, I think he thought, you know, because I was at two hundred last year. But that, that could probably get me through. I, I think it's certainly something we can revisit as the, as the. As, as the, as we get halfway through and, and I, and I think we'll, we'll know better where we're at.
Counselor, this is where like, we know how we talk about the ninety-nine versus the ninety percent. And we're, you're gonna find things here and there like that and there is money in the budget. You know, the last twenty minutes, everything that chief was describing about how, you know, supplementals grow and. In, in a line item, surpluses grow in a line item because of, uh, you know, redirecting or, or supplementing salaries with grants and. Whatever the case, so these are like, the, again, part of that, that. Strategy, we don't like to move money around later to make sure that these line items are covered with funds that are in the budget.
The only thing I'm a little concerned about, Mayor, is the fact that in prior years you had levy capacity. This year you have none, so.
But, but we do though, that's, it, we, you know, in the earlier part of our conversation, as we've talked about. Right now, as it stands, the levy capacity reflects what it reflects, but revenue, you know, we, number one.
So you're saying, what you're saying is this number, not for next fiscal year, you're saying for this.
You were at the meeting, yeah, so the budget that's in front of you, this budget's conservative using. The, um, the House numbers and not the Senate numbers, and the Senate numbers are much more favorable. Uh, than the House, um, so there's already a two hundred thousand plus. Access capacity right there, not yet reflected, and then also, um. Uh, the revenues were budgeted conservatively, so by the time you set the tax rate, your, your access capacity is, it's the same thing that happened the last two years. Access capacity turns out to be much greater than, than, than what's currently being reflected. But I, you know, I, I, the goal is not to tap into that, right? Like, we want to try to reserve that as much as we can and. With, and move around what's within the budget.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Counselor, um, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Madam President, um. Chief, I'm not gonna ask you to go into a huge analysis on this, but I'm looking at injured on duty line five-one-one-eight-zero. And this is just an impression that I've had, um, not doing a spreadsheet on the. Transfers that we've been making, but it seems like we've had more injuries. And maybe they're lasting longer lately and I'm just wondering, I mean, I know there's a lot of issues on the street. And I'm just wondering if you see this as a trend that you think is going to continue to go upward? Or if you see there are some things and equipment that we can provide? That might either stabilize it or decrease it, and I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Well, I can, I can say that injured on duty is always, uh, something we look at. Um, we did move to a different, uh. Manager of the injured on duty, uh, future comp and it's been really going pretty well. Um, each injured on duty person receives a, you know, a, a caseworker and they're constantly following, doing the follow-ups. A lot of the stuff, um, that I used to kind of look into myself, they seem to do that now, so that's. Certainly helped move things along. I think that the vast majority of the. What I see is like the slow return to work is not the officer necessarily not wanting to come to work. It's, it's more of, as, as you all probably experienced in your own lives, trying to get into a doctor is not. It, it's not in a day, you know, even though we can ask and we can push in certain places. Um, the work connection is really good to us to get us in, but it's like when they have to go to specialists. You know, their, the, the appointments can be tough to book and get into in a quick manner, so. Um, but it's gotten better under, uh, I think under future comp to, to get them in, um, and so. Uh. I just had one cleared today, so that's a good thing, um. I, I track it every day, like I have a board here, I'm always watching it. I have their next appointments. I'm being updated constantly by, um, any chance of a light duty status. Um, to get them back to work in some capacity helping us. And then, um, in, in some cases, we've had, um, officers who. Were former dispatchers and when we were short in dispatch, they were able to come back on light duty and work in there, so. We are always looking for those, uh, positions that they can work in, that help us if they can be cleared by their doctor, but. The bottom line is if the doctor isn't ready to clear them, there's really not much I can do to get them back quicker. Once the doctor at least e- evaluates and lets, you know, gets them into a light duty status, then we find them. Roles here. There's always something we can have them do to help us out, so, um. It's a, it, I can't, I can't put a finger on it like it's, it's always this amount or that amount. It seems to kind of go up at times. And then it comes back down, um, we were riding kind of like a high number for a while, but that's come back down now. So it's, it's starting to become a little more manageable and getting the people back on the street is always a great thing. So we just keep monitoring it and, and the hard part in policing is you just never know when that next call's gonna come that could wipe out. Two or three officers in one call, so we keep our fingers crossed that that doesn't happen, um. We try to encourage our officers. We have a gym here to work out, stay physically fit and healthy. Um, the best we can and, um, hope that that helps.
I hear you on that and, um, I, I guess, I mean, we all know it's a high-risk proposition. Every time our officers go out, but I guess I am happy to hear that you don't have like a. Big, uh, serious sort of system concern that certain types of injuries are going way up or there's some. Lack of equipment, um, that is. Lending to more injuries or anything like that going on. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's fair to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any follow-up questions from other counselors for the police chief? Or the mayor? All right. Thank you, Chief. Oh, yeah, go for it, go for it.
Not a follow-up, but just a process question for you. Like, w- if we had budget recap questions or questions on page forty-nine about. Some of these different higher level cost items. Um, we mentioned health insurance obviously earlier, but maybe some of these other ones. What night will those be on in, in your view?
Um, so tonight we did go, I know you were late, the, we did have, um. TJ Plant was here, uh, at the beginning, um, to go over the, the recap sheet. Um, but I'm, I'm sure that, um, you know, if there's something that comes up. Uh, between now and then, maybe we could.
Do it offline, yeah.
Okay, okay.
When, when Kel, when Personnel comes here, if you want, you know, that's an opportunity right there to talk about the health insurance because she's been heavily involved. True, excuse me, and then, uh, you know, other departments that oversee that insurance line items certainly bring it up.
Okay, that's what we did last year.
Yeah, I had a question, like I saw auto excise tax was up like seven hundred thousand.
Oh.
Stuff like that or, um.
Tanya can probably answer that right now, but there was a, a high-level overview on the revenues. Uh, with TJ Plant and Tanya together at the beginning of the meeting.
Did you guys talk about auto excise? I don't want to make you repeat.
I did, we talked about that.
Oh, okay, all right, I'll, I'll catch up with you offline. Tanya, maybe. When you have a minute, maybe just shoot me an email as to why that went up so much. I was surprised.
I will, I have, I have a spreadsheet.
Okay, cool, cool, um, as far as some of these other ones, I suppose we'll wait till. Um, like claims and damages, I would assume that's the law department. Unemployment would be Personnel, I would assume, when, when some of those come in.
Yeah.
Well, I, I can wait on those, thank you.
Okay, awesome. All right, with that, um, we'll close this budget hearing. Um, and as a reminder, uh, the next one will be on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. And that night we will be doing the library with Syria Hurst, Parks and Recreation, Emergency Management. Council on Aging, Community Development, Planning, Purchasing, and the Fire Department. Um, so we'll meet that day and, um, I just want to thank all the department heads and everyone who was here. All right? Thank you, everyone, good night. Thank you, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.